I call to order the virtual study session of the Lakewood City Council on Monday, April fifteenth at seven oh two P M. To connect with the council meeting this evening, please use one of the following links, Lakewood speaks dot org or Lakewood dot org slash council videos. And for public comments, we will be keeping Lakewood speaks open to receive public comments, not only through the meeting tonight, but into the morning hours tomorrow will be open until ten A M. So for any of our observers tonight, please feel free to send any of your comments, thoughts, questions to our way through Lakewood speaks and your councils will have the ability to view those. We are also, well, we'll be talking about two topics tonight. First, we'll be getting an update on cold weather sheltering. And then secondly, moving over to a topic regarding parkland dedication and improvement fees. So with that, I will hand it over to the clerk. Will you, the clerk, please call the wall?
Mayor Strom?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Labir?
Here.
Mayag, Mayag Guerrero?
Here.
Nystrom?
Here.
Olver?
Here.
Ryan?
Yes.
Sharazai?
Here.
Sinks?
Here.
Stuart?
Here.
Mayor Strom, you have a quorum.
All right. Thank you very much. So with that, we'll introduce our first topic this evening is a presentation on the cold weather shelter update and an opportunity for city staff to come back to report back to city councils. This was our first full cold weather season that we had options for unhoused through largely recovery works through the cold weather snaps that we saw throughout the winter. So asking staff to come report back to give us what was seen out there. It's very much a learning experience. This is very much a progress, our work in progress. So we're excited to hear from a number of presenters this evening. What I'll do is I'll hand over the microphone to our deputy city manager, Ben Goldstein, to get us started with the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'm going to share my screen so we can jump right in. And it's a fairly short presentation with a focus on the background and then addressing the key questions, the three questions that council asked, and then a bit of a summary about our operation. But we really want tonight to be a dialogue with you all to answer the questions you have. As the mayor said, a lot has happened over the last year. It's been a learning experience for us, for us all. So please feel free to ask questions. We have myself, we also have James Ginsburg from Recovery Works available to answer questions, and then Sergeant Alan Alden from the CAT team, and Matt or Matthew Wellington, who is one of our homeless navigators. So tonight's presentation will be focused on the cold weather shelter. We will have an opportunity for a broader discussion in, in the future about homelessness and some of the other efforts regarding the continuum of housing. But tonight's presentation is really kind of a, a season summary of the cold weather shelter. I'll share my screen now. All right. Can you all see that? Okay. So I wanted to start off tonight with a little bit of background. Some of you are new to council and the beginning of our cold weather shelter predates your time on council. So hopefully this will be informative to you and for those of you who were on council when we embarked on this journey, maybe a bit of a retrospective experience. So historically, the city of Lakewood has not provided sheltering services to those who are unhoused in a congregate setting. As the needs grew in Lakewood in recent years, however, the city continued to look for innovative solutions to support those in need. This began with the creation of the police department's CAT team, the Community Action Team, whose specially trained agents work with many residents experiencing homelessness. In 2020, the city of Lakewood continued its leadership in, leadership in innovation when it began the first, when it was one of the first municipalities in the region to deploy homeless navigators with the CAT team in an effort to go further than just crime prevention and truly work toward finding stable housing for those experiencing homelessness. To date, the homeless navigators have successfully assisted one hundred and thirty-three people into long-term housing and prevented seventy-seven evictions. I think it's important to key in on that because though we are doing a lot of great work through the cold weather shelter, we continue to do all this other work and it builds on itself. And, and the CAT team is still playing an active role in this. The city's first overnight shelter was activated on February twenty-second of twenty-three at the Whitlock Recreation Center. These first shelter nights pushed the organization to its limit as emergency declarations were speedily crafted to allow for the use of the facility, a use of a facility that was not purpose-built to house a congregant setting. It was an all-hands-on-deck effort, and some of you will remember that. It was a little bit of a scramble to get up and running. But it was successful and we were able to house forty-one individuals during those first two nights at the Whitlock Recreation Center. The use of the Whitlock Recreation Center for the city's first overnight extreme weather shelter resulted in operational disruptions for the rec center, for the rec centers' regular users. Thus, a new location was needed to identify as the city looked toward additional nights of sheltering in the future. Many city-owned facilities were evaluated, but those facilities had similar drawbacks as the use of the Whitlock Recreation Center. Recovery Works, an existing community partner that was already working to help those experiencing homelessness in our community, was looking to expand its services and was willing to allow the city to operate its extreme weather overnight shelter out of its newly leased space at eight thousand West Colfax, which remains the current location for the city's shelter. This space would require the use, continued use of an emergency declaration because it too was not designed to house a congregant setting. But the location on Colfax was truly ideal for this facility. The city of Lakewood and city council should be proud of all that has been accomplished during the last year, and particularly what was achieved in the mid-January cold snap that we had earlier this year. Sheltering those without housing is a new service that has not previously been provided for the city and remains a work in progress, as I think many of you understand. The city is still in a transition as it works towards a fully operational navigation center with, with a built-in overnight shelter. That said, Lakewood is truly leading the way among its peers in Jefferson County and should be looked at differently than cities such as Denver for it is not a city and county and has historically not provided human services. Now transitioning a little bit to where we are and the, the three questions that were highlighted. On October eighth of twenty-four, city council approved the request by two council members to hold a study session. This was attempted earlier this year, but had to be delayed for a variety of reasons. We're doing it now. We would have done an end of season wrap-up, so we apologize that we couldn't do it earlier. But this is that study session and an end of season wrap-up. The three questions are on the screen. The first question, how does Lakewood's extreme weather shelter get activated? Lakewood uses a temperature threshold of twenty degrees for activation. Precipitation is not a criteria for Lakewood shelter activation as it is difficult to predict well in advance and Lakewood needs to provide its community partners forty-eight hours notice. We've looked at changing this criteria, but we think it would be difficult. As you know, we did activate the shelter when we had the extreme snow event or, or heavy snow event earlier this year. That required an additional emergency declaration to activate. The emergency declaration that we used to activate at the Recovery Works site at eight thousand West Colfax does specify twenty degrees as the threshold for activation. When the shelter was first initiated, when we ran those two nights in twenty-three, we used a temperature threshold of thirty-two degrees. That temperature threshold seemed to be kind of the norm across the region. Some cities use a temperature threshold of zero degrees, so twenty degrees colder than Lakewood's new threshold for activation. So we feel like the twenty-degree threshold is a, a, a good threshold, but it has resulted in additional nights of operation and a bit of a pivot for city staff. How does the city communicate with the public when the cold weather, weather shelter is activated? I think when this question was initially asked, there, there were a lot of growing pains going on for the city as far as communications. I think in general, we are doing a much better job in communicating about shelter activation now than, than we had been doing previously. The city launched a new website and you're seeing a screenshot of that on the slide here. The website serves as a one-stop shop for those seeking information related to unhoused individuals or who are currently unhoused. It has a ton of resources, including a direct link to heading home and the two-on-one system. Also, it has information about the Severe Weather Shelter Network, who has been a partner of the cities and also activates a cold weather shelter with slightly different criteria than the city's shelter, but does, I think now operate as a tandem. Largely, we're operating many of the same nights that they are. In addition to the new website and other outreach mechanisms, city staff went very aggressive on social media. And though we haven't completed our postseason, postseason tallies, we think that based on early or mid-season numbers, we will probably exceed two hundred thousand impressions on our multiple social media channels and over twenty thousand engagements, so that if someone liking a post or engaging on that post. So those are big numbers. That's just related to shelter and other homeless services that we've put out on social media. We are seeing very good traction on social media. I think it's worth noting that this is a population that pushes communication staff in finding new ways to communicate with. It's inherently a difficult population to communicate with for, for a variety of reasons. But we think we're doing a pretty good job now. We haven't heard any of the concerns that we were hearing previously in, in the past several nights of operation. But again, we, we continue to strive to, to be better and we'll keep pushing the envelope here. I wanted to go over some of the numbers related to our nights of operation. I think, you know, first of all, looking at the total at the bottom, that's a really impressive number given that Lakewood wasn't in this space at all a couple of years ago. The, the fact that we have set up and now operate an extreme weather shelter, I think, is a testament to city council and staff's dedication to the public and all members of our community. It has been a challenge, lots of growing pains along the way, but we are getting better at it. I think it's also worth noting that Lakewood has been deliberate in this process and hasn't thrown caution to the wind. We remain steadfast to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars, but also creating a safe environment for those who are seeking shelter with us. We don't want to put anyone in a situation that's unsafe. You'll notice as you look at the numbers around that mid-January event, they got up pretty high. And I think, you know, we, we had some lessons learned during that event. There was so much need in the community and we really weren't prepared for that kind of need. Lakewood didn't end up being a, a critical piece in Jefferson County's response. And we were transporting away from our shelter because we really did reach capacity. We were attempting to voucher as many people as we could in advance of those nights, but the numbers got pretty high. After that event, we did work with the fire department and our own building officials to better go through the existing space at eight thousand West Colfax that was being used for sheltering and find a number that fits within the confines of the space. So you'll see that, beginning with the operational night of February tenth and throughout the rest of the year, it's fifty. That is our capacity for the shelter. That's an agreed-upon capacity with the fire department and our building officials. When we operated the shelter over capacity during those nights, and I don't know that we had as firm of a set capacity, we were still figuring out that space. We did cause damage to the facility. It, it met its limit and for those of you who read through the mid-season report, you'll know that we overloaded the plumbing and resulted in the closure of Recovery Works daytime operations for two days as well. So yes, we made it through and Recovery Works was in step with us during those operational nights. But operating a, a cold weather shelter is not exactly like operating a library or something like that. There's a lot of stuff that goes down the toilets and it was, it was a little too much for the facility. It was a good learning experiences for us also as we're a partner in Recovery Works, with Recovery Works in creating a more permanent shelter setting and know that we're going to have to spend some real money to set that facility up for long, long-term success. So, you know, it's not just put some paint on the walls and, and get it ready for a hundred folks. We're, we're really going to have to look at the infrastructure of the facility and, and put it in a position for heavy usage. You'll also see that we began tracking how many folks we transported and then how many folks we vouchedered. These numbers you'll see for, for the last several nights or last few nights of operation were unknown. That, that's part of another learning curve we've had. We work with Bayard to operate our shelter and they're working through tracking these different numbers as well. And we hope to get these numbers at some point, but they weren't able to firm them up. We also have lots of different folks vouchering. So because the county hasn't been able to come through with its own shelter as a peer shelter to Lakewood, their solution has been vouchering. And, and they've, they've put county resources up, financial resources to help with those voucher nights. They've also approved Bayard to assign vouchers. So that was a big step for us because previously vouchers had to be assigned by a CAT agent or police agent. And now our new system with Bayard, we were, we were filling up and then vouchering, but we didn't want people to wait till late in the night when it might be really cold and dangerous because they wanted to get a hotel room. We didn't want to provide an incentive to stay out in the cold longer to try and be the fifty-first person. So working with Bayard and working with our police agents and CAT, we identified a plan where it's essentially, we voucher as much as we can in the beginning, anticipating that we'll reach capacity. And because we've met capacity every single night since we've had the, the fifty in, in place, so we'll start vouchering in the beginning or when we reach capacity, we will let the first ones in. So Bayard keeps track of who came in and kind of what their order was to the shelter. So people are starting to queue up to get ready to come in at seven o'clock when the shelter opens. So that first person in the shelter, once they reach capacity, will then get vouchedered out or have the option to be vouchedered out to a hotel. Sometimes they choose not to go because they've already gotten settled for the night. They've already had their meal. You know, we might not reach capacity till eleven or one in the morning. Well, they're asleep. They don't want to go, you know? They just want to stay asleep. So, you know, we do want to offer it to them though as the first one to the shelter. So that's another area where we've, we've continued to evolve as we've moved forward. I think ideally going forward, Lakewood needs to not be the only city offering shelter. We really do need our other peers in Jefferson County to step up and, and offer sheltering. And I think, you know, for those of you who are kind of trying to think about how can we help as a city council, that's a key part is working with other cities to get their city councils to make the tough decisions that you all made and step up and start offering sheltering through the creation of another navigation site. It was never envisioned that Lakewood be, would be the sole provider of navigation services. So we really need to see that so that Lakewood doesn't become a magnet for those in need. We want to serve our community and we want to serve those in Jefferson County, but we can't be the only game in town. Happy to answer more questions as I see some of you were, were definitely deep in thought during that portion. The, the final question of the three questions that were asked by city council or approved by city council, what are the plans for the future? As, as many of you know, the, the city accepted a, a significant grant from Recovery Works, sorry, from DOLA to work with Recovery Works to help build out this space in a permanent setting. Ultimately, we anticipate about a hundred beds and again, a significant overhaul to the space at eight thousand West Colfax. We are looking at a continuum of housing needs, but won't be getting into all of that tonight. So I really just want to focus tonight's discussion on the cold weather shelter portion. And with that, I'll move into questions and stop sharing my screen.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. And you did an eloquent job of, of communicating what felt like a very uncomfortable, constantly moving, constantly trying to get it right situation while we've gone so far. And thank you so much. And, and I should mention too, for our public attendees that are joining us tonight or watching this after tonight, there are a couple of things of information that will give you more, more information about this. The staff memo as well as the mid-year report doesn't go up as late as March, but gives you some really good background outside of this conversation. So if you're looking to learn more, those are resources available on Lakewood speaks.org. We'll go ahead and open up counselor questions with Counselor Mayat Guerrero and then Counselor Seek.
Pardon me, the spring, the spring in the air is getting my lungs today. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm really thrilled that we're able to have like this level of discussion this year about this rather than, I, I mean, right, like I just, you talked about it, but I have questions and I promise that I'm not actually going to talk for like twenty-five minutes, although I want to on this topic, as you all know. And, and Mr. Goldstein yourself and a few other key staff people and have, have, I've gotten the, really the honor of being able to like be at some level of helping to figure out some of this with you all. And I just want to really recognize and you did talk about it, but like on Christmas Eve in twenty twenty-two, like I was at three in the morning at an emergency shelter that was like, we, we as Lakewood helped them get cots at the, at the Lakewood United Methodist led by Pastor Davis Hensley. And, you know, the, the, the time periods that they were short on was at three in the morning and I'm a night owl. That's why city council meetings are all right for me. And, you know, that, that was how we did that. Like we were finding bed, we were finding beds. Staff were helping to find beds and blankets and figure out people to cook meals as we were also wandering the neighborhoods, driving the neighborhoods and bringing people to a church without like proper resources, but just knowing that we couldn't keep letting people be so injured on the streets, right? And again, that wasn't just me. Like I, I got to show up and I was a part of dozens of community members, at least dozens of staff members who were using their Christmas holiday to try to prevent people from freezing because we didn't have any of this. Not a single, like, we didn't even really have great communication with like other cities, all of our different departments, right? We can't even figure out that level of how to administer a program like this. And so I do, I, you know, I'm, I think I'm always very willing to recognize the amount of work we have left to do. I'm really ambitious about, I'm really like optimistic about what I think that we are capable of, given what we've done. But I just, I have like have to take this moment to feel like proud of the community and proud of the city for seeing a seemingly insurmountable problem that was just not being solved by anyone else and deciding that we had to start figuring it out. And that's just amazing. The amount of And that's just amazing, the amount of compassion, leadership, the amount of learning, perseverance and and from staff and community. We now operate in Lakewood with a totally different level of political will as a community, not just as like city government. And that's amazing also. So I just, I want to just really say thank you to anyone in the audience that helped with that, everyone on council. Then now, like everyone on staff who's touched it, which is hundreds of people who have had to touch this program. And I just, I'm just so impressed. And the fact that you're like, yeah, this is, we're just doing this report. I promise we're still doing additional work was how you started this conversation because we all want to figure out how not let people die from weather, right? And that's such a cool shared value because it's actually just not that radical, but it was five years ago. That was a radical idea, right? And so I just, I really want to take that moment and say thank you so much for your leadership. I'm so sorry for my my monologue. I just, I'm, this is the thing I ran on and I'm, I'm excited we have more steps to do and I'm excited we've taken any steps. It can feel hard. So my questions, some of it was on those numbers. You know, I'm really, I am really pleased for the level of just trying to figure out that that hard decision making of keeping people off the streets and not wanting to turn people away and keeping people safe inside, right? And so I was wondering if you, if we know if we ever turned anyone away without having a place for them to go or without having a voucher, an additional shelter or bed to take them to. And if we've given any thought, like if, and if that's the case, or we expect that might be the case in the future, if we've given any thought to like how to solve that.
We've certainly given lots of thought on how to solve it. And I think we knew when we went to the 50 cap, we were going to hit that capacity probably every night based on the need we were seeing before. The the new location on Colfax being really easy for folks to get to. So I think as far as I know, we haven't had to turn folks away. Now that it's possible that, you know, someone, you know, we've been at capacity and, you know, someone showed up and saw that we were at capacity and chose not to stay. We have been utilizing vouchers. We've also, and I failed to mention this when I was talking about it earlier, but we now pay Bayard to transport people to motels that were vouchering. So the city is providing that service. We had asked that maybe the county provide transportation. They didn't or couldn't step into that space, so we're paying Bayard to do that because we saw that as kind of a gap in the system. If we're using vouchers as our overflow, county supported vouchers, but it's 11:30 at night, it's it's really difficult for someone to get to a hotel or motel that could be a mile and a half away or further. And and it's cold. So this city is paying for that. It has increased our operational costs. It also provides additional staffing when they're, when, so we require that two people are used for the transport for everyone's safety. And so when those two people aren't transporting to an area motel or hotel, then we have those additional staff members on site. So that's, that's our current setup. I think it's pretty solid. But it's also not, not the best. We'd really like to have an additional shelter in the area that is also serving the those in need. So I think that's a better system. Vouchering is extremely expensive. And luckily the county is paying for it right now. I don't know that that's a forever thing. So if, you know, we're vouchering 25 a night, that's going to get pretty expensive in a hurry. So I don't know that it's a long term solution, but it is what we have right now. We think it will probably be a couple of years before we're operational at that 100 person capacity. We're still working on acquisition of 8,000 West Colfax. And then we'll have to do a significant remodel to the space. So it won't be next winter. You know, the winter 24, 25, we will be operating essentially how we are this winter. So, you know, late into this season, we were still making modifications and trying to dial everything in because we know we're going to need those ideas moving into next winter.
You, I, I, Mary Strom, I defer to you. I know that the the point of this is a little bit discussion. I have like questions sort of in this similar, additional questions in this like similar category of thing. And then was going to pause if that is like the appropriate way to approach that. Or I can, you know, yield and I I have like a couple of more like numbers questions specifically on like that slide.
It's on that one. Let's go ahead and and do it.
Okay. Yeah, I'll ask my, I'll ask my other, I've got another topic, we can go around. This is, yeah, that's, that's really interesting to think about. I'm, I'm really interested in how we as elected leaders in Lakewood can help like support the effort for that further county and multi-city collaboration. So I'd just love for us to really discuss how we can support that. One of the other things that sort of came to my mind during that time, which, you know, wasn't a part of this because it's not technically a part of the program is other council people have been in town for more of these than me, so they've done more of this than I have. But I've gotten it at least a couple of times, get donations from our local restaurants for food to feed people because that's also been a thing. And so one of the things I was just like reflecting on is the amount, like I was saying, like the amount of a community involvement that also happens and whether or not we've thought about or if we could think about the, like having more consistent outreach with those community leaders, entrepreneurs, business owners, volunteers who like just want to show up. Like if, you know, the way that there's like the ward meeting emails, like you just sign up for that list and then you get that alert like the same way that we then get to know, the website knows, but then Providence Tavern, which has given food multiple times over the years, also not just this year to this, but to shelters. Like they could know and if they have the time and the money and or in the, and that spare food that they will let us know or bring it, right? Just because I know that that's a whole nother space of like staff capacity that's hard, right? To to navigate that too. So, and I I think food is just a concrete example, but I think there's a lot of ways that the community is is showing up and is interested in continuing to show up to like help support a system that again, we actually don't, we barely have the infrastructure to make it successful, so.
Yeah. Donations are tough. It, it's a tricky thing from a staff standpoint. So we pay Bayard to provide meals. You know, we have an operational cost every night that that we fund as a, as an organization. And we have to do that for consistency. We can't, you know, we can't just kind of say, hopefully a restaurant is going to be able to provide food tonight. And we, you know, when folks are there, we're going to feed them. So I think, you know, truthfully, from a staff standpoint, it is really challenging for those operating in the shelter when we do get donations because it it kind of throws everything in chaos. So I think if we could set it up in a way where we have a donation website and, you know, they can commit that, you know, they're going to provide and, you know, they, you know, we would know 48 hours in advance that we're going to operate. And and, you know, they've already signed up and, you know, maybe Bayard can reach out to a handful of restaurants that have kind of volunteered to say, hey, we want to be on the list. Let us know if you're going to operate. So that there are ways we could do it, but I will tell you right now, staff would rather not. You know, because it, it's very difficult and it creates an expectation. So if if the patrons are experiencing a really high level of food one night and then the next night they're having peanut butter and jelly sandwiches because, you know, that's better than nothing, but that's, that's what was on the menu. Then it can create some hostility or frustrations. So I think, you know, consistency is is kind of better for everyone in this case. But it's definitely something that staff has thought about. You know, I think it's great that the community wants to support. We, you know, particularly during the January event, we had folks who really wanted to step up and they, they wanted to provide clothing or or different things like that. But we're running a shelter and it's chaotic, even even at 50, it's chaotic. You know, we're, we're trying to create a safe environment. So then if you have a bunch of bags of clothes and stuff like that, you know, we've, we've kind of used that facility to its max even with 50 and during that really cold weather event, we were over max. So I know that's tough for folks to hear that like it kind of creates more chaos. But that's, that's the situation. I think if we could provide some order to it, then maybe that's something we could look at in the future.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm hearing is that as somebody who community organizes full time, I am, I have, you know, six months to be helpful in creating some of that structure that can help people show up in ways that are helpful, right? And that would be communicating with you all, communicating with Recovery Works and talking to our various volunteers. Because I imagine the other skill that we have in the community are people who would be also willing to like help referee that with Recovery Works, but they would need to be really consistent, right? And so I'm not, I'm not committing to that. I'm just saying like, oh, it sounds like if we could figure out how to like fill some of that so it's less expensive, that would be great. But we'd need to figure out a lot of structure and consistency. Totally heard. That makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, I thi- I think it's hard because we're not a volunteer shelter anymore. And that's what Lakewood has had before. So people are kind of used to to being hands on.
Yeah.
This is a professionally run shelter. You know, it, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars in contracts and, you know, there's a lot that goes into operating the shelter.
And it means that it's safe for people. It's really safe, well run and it's consistent, right?
That's right. Train, train staff that know how to look at these population, this population and their needs and just a different thing than we've done in the past.
I wonder if there's like a lot of Lakewood volunteers that want to show up in a church basement in Wheat Ridge somewhere while they're still just doing volunteer things. My last question on this particular line of reasoning is do we, do we keep track of the actual individuals in any way? Like, are those the same 50 people, different 50 people? Or is that just, we're just not dealing with that because we were trying to get people off the streets?
I don't know the answer to that question. But so I think we probably have a sense, but we don't, we're not, someone doesn't need to have a driver's license to come in the door. They don't have to, they don't have to provide anything. We're not tracking people. For vouchers, it is a little different. We, we do have some additional paperwork we have to do on the voucher side. But if someone just wants to come sleep in our cold weather shelter, we're happy to let them sleep.
Great. Thank you so much.
Mary, I think you're muted.
Like you, Counselor Sinks, then Sharazai, then Cruz.
Thank you. So, yeah, we've been talking about the cold weather shelter. I wonder about the severe weather shelter, which could be warm weather, extremely high temperatures. And so what I wonder is, has there been much talk about it? If so, is there a threshold? And it's kind of like inverted with Colorado weather. So the nights in the summer could be very tolerable outside, very livable temperatures, but the more, but during the day, the afternoons, they could be extremely high. And so tell me, talk to me about how you're thinking about the summer, what the idea is there?
Yeah, we, we have started to have some conversations about it. You know, we, we had one summer already since, since we activated. We didn't have any days that we needed to provide services. You're exactly right, though. The, the nights are normally the safer portion of, of a hot weather event or extreme heat event. And then the days, fortunately, we do have Recovery Works. And and so that's kind of the solution right now is that Recovery Works space. People can get out of the sun. They can find a cool place to be. Providing assistance in the heat is a lot easier to do. There's also a lot of other kind of third spaces out there in the community, like libraries and stuff like that that are open during the day as opposed to an extreme cold event where the library is cold, closed at night when it's most cold. So, so we haven't seen the need in the community during heat events because I think people just have more places to go. We've talked about even doing, setting up misters and stuff like that. So if people don't really want to go inside, they don't want to leave their possessions, you know, they can still kind of get that cooling, you know, through the the misters and and stuff like that.
And then one just follow up question. If Recovery Works did open their doors during the day in the summer, extremely high temperatures, would there be a capacity limit for them? Do you know?
I don't know what, what their kind of daytime capacity is. We do have James Ginsburg on the line and I can bring him over and he might be able to operate, answer that. But we have not had that specific question or discussed that. Let me bring him over now and Mr. Ginsburg can perhaps speak to if they have a, a operational capacity during the day.
Hi, thanks, Ben. James Ginsburg, Executive Director of Recovery Works. Great discussion. I think that the capacity, as I recall, based on bathroom ratios, I, I think is 200 during the, for non-sleeping. We typically get about between 60 and 90 a day.
Great. Thanks for your answers. I don't have any others.
And again, during the day, it might be a bit more transient where someone might come in and then leave as opposed to the night where they're there for that 12 hour period.
Oh, yes, thank you. I'd like to build on Counselor Sinks' question and just, I wondered about the March storm. It didn't quite hit that temperature threshold, but it was a lot of precipitation. And so did that amend our process? I'm sorry if you missed, if you mentioned that I missed that. But I wanted to understand, like, there is times where it snows a lot, but it's not 20 degrees. So what happens in those situations and have we formalized that process so it's not ad hoc every time?
The, so the, the threshold remains 20 degrees without precipi- with no regard for precipitation. When we opened for that March storm, it was a little bit of a scramble. We had not planned on opening because 48 hours out, the, the precipitation had huge variance in it, anywhere from like three inches to three feet. It was really high variance, more than a normal storm. We were on calls with the National Weather Service and NOAA, trying to get a better understanding of what the storm might look like. But it didn't drop barely below 30 degrees. So it did not trigger our 20 degree threshold. We had to put in place an additional emergency declaration to be able to operate during that. Staff is not recommending we use precipitation as one of our criteria because it's so difficult to predict in advance. And, you know, a major storm like that, we might be able to say, we think, you know, it's going to be a foot of snow. We don't know if it's going to be a foot or three feet, but we think we're going to get at least a foot. But not necessarily. And then if it's two inches to six inches, that's even harder to predict. Like, you know, we could end up getting nothing. Today it was going to rain and at least at the city, it hasn't rained yet. So precipitation is really difficult and I know that's hard. Part of our challenge is that 48 hours. We have been in conversations with Bayard about amending that 48 hours to a shorter timeframe. But right now, they have a lot of staffing demand to manage. So they need to give their employees time to figure out, you know, their schedule and and be able to commit to us. So they haven't been willing to change on the 48 hours as of yet. But I do want Um, but I do understand the concern. Sometimes we have significant weather events that are not necessarily a cold weather event. Uh, the reason temperature is also used is it pervade, prevent, uh, it is the greatest risk to human health, um, as opposed to just being a snowy night.
I would disagree, but okay. So for the sake of this, like, I, I hope that's something we could look at. Uh, because I do think, yes, survivable, but if we, you know, we had city staff like, uh, reacting to that pretty quickly. Sorry, you moved around my screen.
Uh, you did too.
Um, so I want to just make sure that that is something that we're continuing to talk about. And I, I appreciate, uh, the context you give. You know, it is a scramble. And so, you know, the purpose of policies and procedures is that they're answering the questions so that we don't have to answer it, re-answer it every time. And if, I hope that we can continue to reflect on this. And if there continues to be things that we're scrambling to, um, figure out, then those are policies that need to be addressed. And I think precipitation would be one that I'd put on the top of the list. Um, this is going to be unpopular, but what's going on with Arvada? There was speculation that they were going to get their navigation center up and running well before we were. And we're sort of dancing around like neighbors doing that, but there was a real commitment from that community. And so, so is there any update that you all can provide on sort of where our partners are in the county? We know everybody has a commitment to this, but I do share your fear of like, well, we'll just, um, move folks to Lakewood because they have their systems up and running. And where's the sort of timeline on that second navigation system, city, center that was going to come to the county?
I don't have any information I can share with you on that. I don't know where Arvada is at, unfortunately. Um, I hope they're still moving forward, uh, but I, the last I heard, that conversation stalled out a little bit. Um, they were ahead of us. Um, like you said, they, they were going to be the first navigation center. Um, so hopefully, um, things progress and perhaps when we come back and have that broader conversation about kind of that continuum of housing and, and the different things involved in that, maybe some of those, uh, more countywide, um, discussions will be able to, uh, be added during that.
Great. And just one more question, and this may be one for you, Mr. Ginsburg. But at post-renovation, what will be the capacity? We're at fifty now for overnight shelters. I know the daytime services looks different, but what can we expect after the renovation?
So we've been in some stages of design with Shopworks, architecture firm that's done. They designed the, um, Dolores project and done other trauma-informed design shelters. And, you know, it's kind of a, it's, we're going back and forth in terms of, we, we certainly don't want to just do rows and rows of bunks, which would be a high capacity, but it would be a low, uh, uh, autonomy and, and less trauma-informed. And so right now, we feel like we're settling in, as Ben said, about a hundred beds. And, and right now, we're at fifty female, fifty male, with some flex space for, um, gender neutral. Um, some flex space for couple, potentially some space for pets. Couples and pets are a real challenge in shelters, and so we want to try to accommodate that. Um, and even though the, typically the demographic on the street is five to one, male to female, w- we don't necessarily want to reflect that in the shelter. We would rather have a higher ratio of female beds to the homeless population just because of their vulnerability. So that's where we're at by fifty to fif- uh, fifty, you know, fifty each.
Great. Thank you so much.
We're always open to feedback. Um, that's not locked, you know, etched in stone yet.
Great.
All right, Counselor Cruz, then Counselor Lo, then Counselor Hol.
Thank you all. Yeah, I just, um, I do want to echo other counselors gratitude for the hard work that's been put into the severe weather sheltering program over the last year and plus. Um, as somebody who was one of the volunteers in one of those early shelters, I know how much this means to protecting people in the community. Um, and also for folks and constituents who I've talked to who aren't experiencing homelessness. I think that I have heard almost nothing but excitement for keeping people safe in these really extreme events. So, um, do know that the work is very much appreciated in the community. And I think, um, through all of the things we've learned the hard way, I think things are improving and getting better. And so know that that, um, is something that, yeah, people are grateful for. And also I think, you know, speaking to some of the engagement on social media, I think it just reaffirms that this is a point of interest to the community, um, and that, um, we are on the right track of continuing to, um, work in this space and be a leader in this space while hopefully bringing other folks along with us. And so, yeah, and then the final kind of comment before some of my questions. I totally hear you on the, uh, organizing food piece. I could totally tell that it was chaotic at points. But I also think, although we are like putting money into the contract with Bayard for food, and I know that they're doing everything in their capacity, I just think that the, the level of like nourishment offered with like cup noodles and like peanut butter, like I just don't know if that also creates the most, facilitates the best environment for people in congregant settings. I know that that's going to change, hopefully, when things, um, move forward, you know, with the great renovations hopefully slated at, at Recovery Works. But, um, since this is going to be continuing in for our next season, I do want to emphasize and would, um, join with Counselor Matt Guerrero's, uh, offer of figuring out how we can do this in a more predictable manner while offering some of these things to people, because I do know it was important and do know it was appreciated by folks who were there. Um, so all that being said, I have a couple of questions. Um, so one, recognizing that, um, you know, this is going to be more of the normal for next season as we continue to move towards greater capacity. Um, what are kind of, what are we thinking for, you know, managing capacity, um, constraints, uh, for this next season? Are we thinking kind of this fifty in this space and, and vouchering? Um, or is there other thoughts around kind of managing capacity at this time?
Yeah, uh, thank you. Um, I, I think it will be, uh, fifty in vouchering. Uh, the, the fifties are number right now. Um, we're, until a renovation happens, fifties are max. Um, I think this system we have right now, where we're paying for Bayard to provide transportation to those voucher sites, um, it's working. Uh, it's a pretty expensive setup, uh, for us as a city and, and for the county. But the county hasn't been able to find a way to provide an alternative shelter location. And un- until another city or the county step up, we, we don't really have another option. Um, we don't think it makes sense for the city to create another shelter location. Within the city, we think there are two challenges with that. One, it, it spreads our staffing out even more. Um, and two, it, it helps Lakewood become an even greater, uh, attractant. Uh, we really need other cities in the county, um, to help serve their populations in need and not have those folks necessarily just, um, to Lakewood for services. Uh, I think, um, we'll probably be able to operate, uh, with, with the voucher setup, uh, throughout next winter. Um, I, I don't, I haven't heard anything about another shelter coming online. So I think, um, that's probably where we'll be. We also don't know what the fate of the severe weather shelter network is going to be. Um, the city is evaluating, uh, some support for them. Uh, we provided them fifty thousand dollars in support this past year, but, uh, it has become a little redundant to the city's shelter and, and maybe not as preferred um, by the unhoused population to ours. So that's something staff's going to have to continue to evaluate.
Okay. Thank you, um, for that information. That's super helpful. Um, yeah, and, and, and I'll just flag from like a, a transportation perspective. I know some feedback that I heard from some constituents I was talking with on Colfax was some, a lot of folks are kind of reticent to go to other cities for fear of not being able to come back. Um, and, and, and so maybe that is like all figured out in folks' transportation plans and people just aren't hearing that. But I just wanted to relay that as something that I was hearing from folks on the ground and that at least one person I talked to, um, at least their impression was when they got to the shelter, the bus passes were out or there wasn't opportunities for transportation. So that person did end up spending the night, um, out on the streets. Um, and so I, again, like, it sounds like there are plans for this, but I do just want to, I have talked to somebody who at least reflects back that they were turned away. Um, another kind of question I wanted to talk, because you brought such great guest speakers. I really wanted to hear, um, from folks maybe who are having more contact with some of our community members, like Sergeant Alden and, um, you know, uh, Mr. Wellington, how, what kind of folks' feedback on, on the ground were on this and, and anything you all thought we should know?
Yep, great. Happy to bring them over.
And Mr. Ginsburg, obviously, too.
Yeah, and, and as they're coming over, um, I'll just say on the transportation piece, yes. Um, we, we did have some gaps. It continues to be a really difficult piece of this to solve. Uh, we were really hopeful that the county would be able to step up on that transportation front. They couldn't seem to figure it out. Um, so the city put its resources, uh, to work with Bayard, um, to at least provide transportation for those voucher, uh, nights. But I, I don't know what happens on the back end of that, um, how, how the people might get back to Lakewood. So I think we still have some gaps there to figure out. Um, and I don't know that we'll have great solutions to them. You know, it just is kind of one of the difficult things around this.
I know as far as some of the transportation after the incidents or after these severe weather events, um, some of our navigators actually went out the next day and were helping folks with bus passes and things like that, who were stranded at hotels in various places, both in Lakewood and in Wheat Ridge. That was one of the ways they got people back. And then as far as like feedback from just generally speaking, the community or, or the unhoused population, it seems to be overwhelmingly positive. I mean, they like to have that alternative, um, given there's always going to be a quantum homeless population that is not um, interested in using the shelter. So we're never going to get everybody off the streets, um, when these severe weather events happen. Um, those who want access to these facilities and want something local that they can use, uh, they seem to be very happy to use it. And I also wanted to make sure to kind of point out too, as, as we were talking earlier about getting the word out about this. Um, yeah, social media is like great. It's good for a lot of folks, but it's not necessarily directed towards our unhoused population. Because while some of them have, you know, internet-only phones and things like that, none of all of them do. So I really want to give credit to, you know, our team, our navigators, our lead case managers, our mental co-responders, um, the CAT team in general, and then the PD as a whole, just getting out amongst that population and letting them know about the shelter, the nights it's going to be opening, and then also our community partners, both in Recovery Works and Mean Streets and some of those others, where we are helping to put up flyers, our, um, community outreach court, uh, letting everybody know about this from kind of the ground up. Because, yeah, not everyone has access to that social media.
And to, to speak about, uh, how the community is viewing it. Uh, many people were extremely enthusiastic that that is always a possibility for them. Uh, many have kind of come to count on it. So it's kind of nice for them to have a constant in the community where they know there's going to be a safe place for them during a severe weather event. Uh, we've had some issues with severe weather network where people weren't able to connect with their services. Um, and so having a low-barrier shelter that is well-known, it's comfortable, it's trauma-informed, uh, really has provided kind of a very safe place for people to, um, know that that's there, uh, when the weather gets, uh, severe.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Oh, sorry. And just one last question. Thank you all really for that feedback and thank you all for the work that you're doing on the ground to make this possible. Um, know that we all really appreciate, um, your efforts. So thank you. Um, the last question I just wanted to ask was, I've gotten some questions from folks in the community, and I know we saw that on Lakewood Speaks as well, about kind of the concordance between the ordinance that was passed last year, um, and the contract that we have. Because our ordinance does speak to, to precipitation and to thirty-two degrees. And so, um, I think that that's creating a little bit of confusion, um, from some folks in the community. So just wanted to ask about kind of moving forward, um, if, how we can kind of best align some of our efforts on that. I mean, would also echo, um, Mayor Protem's thoughts about precipitation being something we need to think through.
Yeah, I, so I think again, precipitation is really difficult to predict forty-eight hours in advance. We, we've talked to the National Weather Service. Their models are not that accurate, accurate forty-eight hours in advance. Um, I think it's something we can continue to look at, but from a staffing standpoint, we would recommend using a temperature threshold only. Um, it's certainly council's prerogative to, um, kind of, you know, do whatever, whatever you want and, and staff will figure it out.
Counselor Lo.
Thank you. Um, gosh, I'm, I'm really glad that we're, we're having the study session, that it's on the books. And I, I really appreciate you coming on and giving us this update, Mr. Goldstein and the entire, you know, Sergeant Alden, uh, Mr. Wellington, uh, 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 Mr. Ginsburg, the, the whole team. I mean, it's, I, I just want to briefly echo what other folks have said. I'm, I'm really, um, grateful, uh, you know, one say.
It's the problem with having, having us meeting on two different places. Um, just close this. Apologies.
Um, I think, I think honestly, just to, to what, echo what Counselor Matt Guerrero and, and others have said, it's incredibly impressive that, um, that we've been able to accomplish this much in the last year. I think it's really exciting to see. And Mr. Goldstein, I know the, the immense amount of work and, and hours and, and stress and heartache that you've put into this over the last year. So thank you. I think it's really accomplished something. I have a couple of questions, but I wanted to lead with this one. Mr. Goldstein, do we happen to know, um, like what the, the, the numbers are in terms of number of, of, of deaths from, um, from cold weather, maybe in previous years and then this year? Because I have a feeling because of all this, this work, that number went down a lot this year. And I, I, I was just curious if we'd looked at that or if not, if that was something we had any ability to track.
I don't know previous years. I don't know that we've looked at it. Um, Sergeant Alden might have some information on that. I don't think we had any deaths, um, this year in, in Lakewood. And maybe not even hospitalizations, but I'll turn it over to Sergeant Alden or, um, Mr. Wellington if, if he has any thoughts.
Yeah, my understanding is there were no deaths attributed to cold weather over the last year. I couldn't speak to previous years. Um, the other thing that would be tough to determine is even if someone were to be found deceased, um, after a night out in, you know, the cold weather, um, unless there is no other substance within their system, it's hard to say exactly what it was that brought about that. Um, but my understanding is there were no cold weather deaths this past winter.
I'm not surprised to hear that, and I, I really appreciate that. I, I think it speaks to the importance of what we're doing. And I ask that in part to kind of ground this discussion and the stakes. I mean, th- these are, I, I really do believe that this work is saving people's lives in our community, and I, I know that you are at the front lines of that. So, so truly, thank you. Um, and again, I, we've said this before. I can't think of just a more serious life or death issue, given that, that this is literally preventing some people from dying. Um, eh, to the extent, I, I don't know if we have some sort of process for, for getting council, you know, periodic updates when someone does tragically pass. I, I would honestly be interested if, if it's feasible, if it doesn't, if, if the CAT team can collect that and, and seeing that. Um, and to the extent the answer is zero, that's great. And we should, I think we should have that be our, our North Star, certainly. Um, I want to echo what's already been talked about. I mean, I, I am, um, I think, Mr. Goldstein, you're exactly right, that, that we, it's great that Lakewood is leading this. And we've got to get some of our other compatriots in Jefferson County a little more off the sidelines here. Um, I am very committed to doing that. We have some, I know we have some elected officials at the county level who care very deeply and passionately about this issue. Um, I really want to, want to figure out how council can support you all. And if, if the answer is by getting the county and the city to do more and support Lakewood, so Lakewood isn't the only actor here, then I think we've all got to really row together on that. And I'm, I'm really committed in, in making that point in the most forceful way possible. Um. On uh, I guess on that point, um. Has there been any, so I guess that brings me to to um the question of of capacity, um, which has already been talked about. Um, I hear loud and clear that until this this navigation center grant is implemented, um, the fifty the fifty capacity and at nights is is a hard limit. Um, first, I think that really underscores the the value and the importance of the nine point five million dollar grant. There was some discussion about the wisdom of that. I think this discussion shows how urgently and desperately needed that those those improvements were. So a a couple of questions there. Number one, totally understand it's going to take some time to do that. I guess I'd be curious from in hearing from Mr. Ginsburg. Sounds like we don't think those retrofits that would expand capacity are going to be ready by next winter. Do we think it's realistic to have in two winters? Um, or is that also going to be a stretch or just too hard to say?
Yeah, and certainly, you know, Lakewood's taken the lead on this and negotiating with the contractors and um. The acquisition and when that may close, whether it's in a whether it's uh July or the end of the year. And then, um, you know, it always has to do with um permitting and contracting and supply chain, all those things. Um, but we're certainly, we're certainly shooting for the winter of twenty, you know, twenty six. Um, the one concern I do have, um, and and it mostly has to do with bathroom capacity. And of course, no showers right now um for the fifty capacity, since there's only two bathrooms. Um, you know, there's going to be, we don't know when the rehab is going to start, and we're going to be negotiating. Uh, running the navigation center while their rehab is happening and, you know, we're concerned about that. And so then you throw in the severe weather into that mix. And I just want to sort of put a place marker and a cautionary tale. Um, that there, you know, there's a chance that facility is not real available next winter if we're in the middle of rehab.
Um, hadn't thought of that. That's gonna.
Um, no, I didn't mean to put a rain on the whole parade, but uh I think it's something that we have to keep in mind.
Well, that actually brings me directly to my other question or one other question. Um, thinking just about how other municipalities can can row together on this. I I second what the Mayor Protem asked, you know, where's Arvada, the this this question of the status of um their navigation center. I mean, not to minimize the the immense complexity of what you all pulled off with Recovery Works. It just seems to. I I. My two senses, we we ought not to be satisfied with the fact that we are the only game in town a year, you know, next year. Um, that there there needs to be somewhere else, somewhere in Jefferson County that is able to take on this this overvoked population. And frankly, Mr. Ginsburg's caution, uh, which I really appreciate, Mr. Ginsburg, that the renovation could complicate things next winter, which totally makes sense. I think redoubles the importance of that point. So, Mr. Goldstein, I'm happy to discuss this further with you. It doesn't have to be denied, but a- any just. I I guess, do you agree that 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 count that the part of the solution to this this hard fifty person limit? And especially given Mr. Goldstein, Mr. Ginsburg's concern about um renovations next winter, that we. Part of our goal needs to be finding somewhere, somehow, some facility in Jefferson County that can take on some of this overvoked population next next winter. So that we're not exclusively reliant on Recovery Works.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, I think even if even if we were operating at a hundred. Um, you know, there there is more need out there. And Lakewood needs to not be the only game in town. There's need throughout the county. Um, so for some folks to get services, you know, the amazing services that are being provided by Recovery Works day in and day out. Or on very cold nights, the sheltering that's being provided at eight thousand West Colfax. Those folks are traveling a long way to to seek out those services perhaps. So, you know, if if you're up in North Arvada. Getting a Colfax might not be the easiest thing, um, or if you're in Westminster or even Wheat Ridge. Um, you know, so there are other cities in the county that absolutely should be stepping up. Um, everyone has folks who are experiencing homelessness. Um, it's not just Lakewood. And I think, um, you know, th- there's also going to be a significant financial cost to the city. Um, as we transitioned to twenty degrees. Um, that dramatically increased our nights of operation. So at thirty two degrees without precipitation, we operated two nights beginning in February. So there might have been a couple nights earlier in the year that we would have operated. But at twenty degrees, we could operate up to fifty nights, um, maybe more. Uh, and if council is interested in going with precipitation, that's going to be many, many more nights. So, you know, there's a, there's going to be a significant cost to operating. Um, and it's important that community partners um outside of Lakewood are also coming to the table. And and the county being the human services provider uh is a pretty important partner there.
Thanks, Mr. Goldstein. I know others have their hands up. Just let me touch on a couple other very quick points and I'll I'll hand the mic over here. Um, I agree with that. I think if if the county is isn't in the foreseeable future going to provide a dedicated. Separate site, we really need to lean on them to provide more financial support. I'm interested in exploring transportation support to the point that you raised. Um, I'm, I to I second, third and fourth what's been said about, you know, if as while we're doing this, can we also look at providing resources during extreme hot weather? Which we know from climate change are going to become more frequent over time and and are more frequent than they were twenty, thirty years ago. Um, I think that would make a lot of sense. Um, I second what's been said about donations. I, you know, I I had a chance, I actually brought um. Uh, food donations on on a couple of occasions that were provided from amazing restaurants in in Belmar in War Three, including um. Little India and T Street Roadhouse, both of which donated quite a bit of food on multiple occasions. Um, I second what Counselor Cruz said. I do, I think it's appreciated um enormously, and I want to recognize those that have been donating. I also hear you that it that the process has been a little chaotic. Um, I think there is a need here. I I actually, I literally was picking up uh dinner from Little India tonight, and I mentioned we were talking about this, and he said, oh, I I want to, I want to donate more. I want to donate more. How can I help? Um, so I I totally understand that city staff don't want to. It's not realistic, given given all of the fire drills you're already doing to sort of add that to your plate, um, Mr. Goldstein. But I am interested in this question of how can the city support someone who could coordinate that, whether that's at Recovery Works or Bayard. Or someone that sits in the city, or is it a team effort? But there, I think there's got to be someone who's sort of setting up some sort of more coordinated portal or system. For local businesses that do want to donate and doing it in a way that's systematic, right? So that it's predictable, so that that we don't have a sudden a flood of food one night and then peanut butter sandwiches and ramen noodles the next night, right? I believe that process can be managed. It's just going to take some some infrastructure and staff support that that maybe we don't. It is is too much for everyone to juggle right now, but but I'd like to see us get there. Um, gosh, I have some other points, but I don't want to talk for too long. I mean, my my most important last question is just what else beyond what we've already talked about, is there anything else that city council can do? To build on this, right? I'm I'm thinking very specifically about work, you know, looking at 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 the budget, looking at um sustaining this long term. Are there other tweaks that you would recommend to the ordinance itself that would give, you know, you and your team, the agency or the flexibility to respond? Um, do you need more staff? Is there anything else that the city needs to do here or the council should look at or or think about? Uh, necessarily, I want to, you don't have to say, yes, you should pass this tomorrow, but something that we ought to look at to kind of build on the work that you've already done over the last year.
I think staff will evaluate during the budget. Sorry, sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, no, you're fine. I wanted to step in. So the purpose of tonight's call is to do a really nice look back on what's been happening, but we will have future conversations. Around that, um, like the continuum of housing, that will be a good time for us to uh identify. Faces, not only with some of the other areas that we've talked about as a body that are important to many of us and many of our residents, but with this one in particular. So, Mr. Goldstein, you may not be prepared to answer that question tonight, and I would offer the council that we will have more opportunities to talk through this.
Yeah.
Looking forward.
Totally understood, Madam Mayor. I'm just, I'm just sort of trying to leverage, seize the moment to at least start thinking about opportunities on the horizon.
Thank you, Mayor Strom, and and Counselor Mervilow. I I think I'll just say kind of broadly. Yes, we're looking at this um homelessness in general uh and and addressing the needs of unhoused in our budget process. I I don't have an answer for you on whether that's additional staff or or what that might look like. Um, I will say that we built out this year's budget based on thirty two degrees. Um, and when we transitioned to twenty degrees, it did result in additional operational nights. So as we're looking at next year's budget, I would anticipate um maybe a higher number to to meet a full winter of twenty degrees. Um, so, you know, you might see numbers in the budget to help support those additional operational nights. Um, but I I don't know that I can answer that, uh, particularly in regards to staffing or or some of the other needs. Um, to to address all those services the city is now providing that we haven't historically provided.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein, and I. Apologies for taking so much time. I just, it's, I. The the urgency of the topic, I think, is 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 compelling. The the last thing I'll say, um, is I I think the point you ra- you raised in the briefing materials, Mr. Goldstein, about the sort of the the distinction between. Eight eight thousand West Colfax and the lack of barriers and the fact that folks can bring their path and pets and don't don't have to pre-register for services. Versus some of the barriers that we've heard repeatedly from stakeholders in Lakewood around the Severe Weather Shelter Network are are significant, are important. These are real, you know, we need systems where folks who are at risk of freezing to death can 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 have a resource without having pre-registered for it. Um, many, many hours in advance through a bureaucracy, um, which is not to impugn or demean the 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 important work that anyone does. But I clearly, given the resource constraints, we do need to be very strategic about where we're putting our resources. So I I honestly am glad that you're you're taking a a look as we go into next winter at at how to allocate resources and whether Severe Weather Network is is. Is the right solution, um, and and how we also expand our capacity for for beds and and provisions for folks that um haven't pre-registered. Okay, I'll stop talking. Thank you very much.
Counselor Over.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll be real quick. Uh, Ben, I just wanted to give you kudos on this presentation. This has been one of the more complete reports that that I've seen since I've been here. Um, I think you hit all sides and and what you're doing is a very good thing. Uh, and it looks like you've got this. And so, um, thank you for for everything you're doing here. Uh, I only have one worry, and that's mission creep. Uh, and, uh, you know, I think we, I know we started this because people could be freezing to death, and we've taken care of that. Uh, and I don't really want to see this go further than keeping that thought in mind. Um, I'm not worried about windy days. I'm not worried about sunny days. I'm not worried about rainy days. Um. Um, if it if it got up to like a hundred and ten, you know, that that might be something we look at, but uh a warm day in Denver isn't all that warm yet. Um, so that's all. Just thanks. Thanks for being complete on this topic. Thank, that's all.
All right, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you. You know, the nice thing is, uh, the counselors before me asked so many fantastic questions. I've been crossing them off my list. Um, I will echo Mr. Goldstein, and I hope you'll please convey to uh all the staff just what a wonderful job that all of you have done. Not only getting this up and running, but uh to actually operate this. And then, uh, I echo Counselor Olver's uh comments about this has been a fantastic presentation. The one thing that a number of us, and I know you mentioned in your presentation. We all want to see somebody else in Jeffco uh open up a navigation center. And you said that there may be ways that we as individuals or city counselors can help. Could you elaborate a little bit on that? Maybe I misunderstood your comment.
Yeah, I I can a little bit. Um, I, you know, it's a difficult question, um, because it's political. Um, so I think, you know, it might come down to if you have a peer in another city that you have a good working relationship with. Having that conversation with them and and helping encourage them. Certainly Kathy is doing that on the executive side. Um, talking to fellow city managers and county manager, um, and and kind of putting the pressure on there. But I think y- you all have seen, or many of you have seen firsthand, the political courage it takes to do something like this. Uh, you know, the the night that uh the Dole Grant was accepted. W- was, you know, one of the highest capacity meetings I've seen in Lakewood. Um, so it is political courage. So, you know, I think helping maybe share um with other electives in in the county and in cities inter- throughout the county. That it's worth it, um, or, you know, that you've seen success on the other side. They're going to be making their own political calculations, so I don't know that, you know, you can necessarily walk in their shoes because every city is a little different. But I think that is kind of what I have in mind, um, so that, you know. We're doing what we can on the administrative side, and ultimately, in many cases, it's a political decision for a city.
Thank you. And then, you know, I understand from the the mayor's comments that. The the purpose of this discussion is maybe perhaps a little more limited than than we might uh want to go into some other territory. But I would hope that uh when we have those future discussions, that the city can come back to us with. If there are obstacles in expediting the permitting process and other construction process from the city's perspectives to allow Mr. Ginsburg's uh. Uh, and eh, the the renovation to occur as quickly as possible. I I hope that the city will engage the city council uh at the earliest possible time. If there are obstacles in our current code that are holding us back in expediting that. Because I think we would all like to try and avoid having renovations uh occurring during the winter of twenty twenty six. Um, so if we could do that. And then my last piece is if the um our Sergeant Alden, if there are, and again, you you don't have to provide comment now. But um if you and your team could be thinking about what things in terms of policies or changes that will help. Uh, allow you to do your job better and convey those to Mr. Goldstein to or or other city staff to come back to city council. I'd very much appreciate any any suggestions on changes that you would like to see. That's it.
Say absolutely, we can come up with a wish list.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just say.
Can we put it, can we put some sort of timeframe in in mind? And I don't, I don't want to make something arbitrary, but that Mr. Goldstein, could at some point in time, you can say, hey, we'll have a a follow-up report to you guys by. You know, September, some some date.
But so I don't know when um we're going to be able to schedule kind of the broader discussion that will be the follow-up to this. Um, but yes, we are working on that and and we will do it uh kind of, there, you know, there, there are many things at play. So we want to have it be the most worthwhile and not have, you know, a piece just hanging out there um where we can't speak to it. So I don't know what the timing will look like, but we will be coming back to you. I can say as far as the Recovery Works piece and getting through the, you know, zoning and building. Uh, the city will be assisting the management of that renovation project. And in doing so, we'll be submitting the permits to ourselves. Um, so, yes, we will do our very best to make it an expedited process. Uh, there there might be, uh, you know, some zoning changes or other things like that that could be coming to city council. And, you know, as we talk through this project, um, or or maybe to the planning commission. You know, we'll make sure that all those are expedited and not, no city process will be holding up uh this project. I think it's really going to come down to uh a very significant renovation. And contractors and supply chain, as Mr. Ginsburg spoke to, there, there's a lot of components that are going to come into this project, and it's going to be significant. So I think, you know, if maybe I can just ask of city council, have patience. Um, it's eh, this is not an overnight fix. Um, addressing the needs of unhoused is challenging. And I know you all are eager um for us to do more and be better, but. Patience is probably the biggest thing we can ask for as as we work through this. We want to do it right, um, and I think being uh safe and and doing it right is is probably the most important thing to us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Stewart, then Counselor Neistrom.
Thank you. I will be super quick. I echo concerns about timeline and not being open in the kind of especially January, February months of twenty twenty five. So I know that that's going to be something that's on everybody's radar and just want to echo that that would be a huge concern of mine as well. And the only other thing that I will say is that when we did pass our severe weather ordinance, it was twenty degrees and dry, thirty degrees, thirty-two degrees with precipitation and did not specify an amount of precipitation, which I realize is difficult to predict, but just precipitation, period. So perhaps that that might make it a little bit easier to kind of determine. Would be happy to reopen that discussion and relook at what a appropriate with precipitation threshold might be, given that I know, you know, that's going to increase our operational costs. But you know, the the reason that we did pass an ordinance that included a with precipitation clause is because humidity in the air and wet on the ground just changes when temperature gets dangerous. So I just want to say that I would love for that to be top of mind on the priority list. I don't think we need a amount of snow on the ground threshold. I don't think that's the point of the precipitation difference. It's that it's wet. And what makes cold different and the results of cold different. So would just like to speak to my support of perhaps relooking at that.
Counselor Neistrom.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, again, Mr. Goldstein, Mr. Ginsburg, everybody that's been involved, I think the work you guys have done is absolutely commendable. Very appreciative of that. Mr. Ginsburg, I'm I'm very pleased to hear you're working with a designer for the Dolars project because I think that's been a great facility and has done a lot of good work. And so that probably bodes well for your success. You know, and again, I'm I'm pleased to hear about, we're already thinking about expediting permits and things of that nature as as things progress, I guess. Just my operational background, I'm already thinking of contingency planning for next year. So hopefully in the next session, we'll have an opportunity to talk about that a little bit because I I think we have more awareness in the community now. And I think that will help us maybe rally some volunteers as needed because we won't have the same structure and we're going to need everybody we can get. So, you know, within our own wards and you know, community involvement and communication, we could probably start building a coalition that will help out as needed. So just food for thought. But again, thank you.
All right. And before we hand it off to Counselor Matt Guerrero for another question, I had one that didn't actually get answered or asked earlier. I was curious if we, being the city or maybe PD, is tracking any metrics of response? Because the reality is, yes, we're talking about things that cost money. But we also know that it costs money when we're not doing things and when it's just a response from our agents showing up or code enforcement showing up, you know, responding to encampments and things like that. And I'm wondering if there's been any tracking or, well, any tracking maybe that started that might inform where we may be saving money through this work.
Mr. Wellington, I don't know if you can speak to it. I did just try and add Sergeant Holden back to the meeting.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. Yeah, he his Zoom crashed. There's the metrics that we use is two things. There's calls for service that either come through the call screen through Jeffcom or GoGov, which can be accessed through liquid.org. Both of those are how we kind of track our calls for service. And then the other navigator and myself, we keep a list and we keep metrics of the people that we serve. So we keep those for those encounters that aren't necessarily law enforcement engagements, but more outreach and social work and case management that we do.
Thank you. Sergeant Alden, before I accidentally cut you off, did you want to add anything there? He may not have the audio back.
I don't know.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and hand we'll hand it over to Counselor Mia Gro.
Thank you. I'm going to be a little more wildfire because I know we need to move on. But I this really is so informative, and I think it it really will influence, like, especially from the HBC perspective, like what we need to be pushing on because it's already happening, right? It's just really, really helpful. Just to follow up on that specific question that Mayor Strom just asked, another thing that I imagine we have not as good of data on is emergency room services. Like the cost of emergency room services if you are freezing or you realize you're really sick in the middle of the night and you end up in the emergency room instead of, right? Like, that is a much more expensive taxpayer burden. Right? So and I doubt we have that data, but that's just another thing I'm thinking about.
We don't necessarily have that data, but we do have a kind of a program that we use. We partner with the West Metro Fire Department with their ARM car, which is an urgent care on wheels. And we go up to the unhoused community four times a month. And from there with our case management, so that people don't have to rely on emergency services to get their medical needs met. We connect them with longer term services and ongoing care through stride, MedNow and other programs so that we can also reduce that burden. Because we understand also our unhoused community doesn't necessarily get the treatment that they need in the emergency room, nor are they treated respectfully. So we're trying to create a way where we can kind of address those issues. So it does reduce the burden on emergency services, emergency rooms and first responders.
I I think I meant specifically during severe weather events.
That's, I mean, we don't have that data. One of the things that we are trying to do is get ahead of each storm. And so through our outreach efforts, we are providing information, bus passes, warm warming gears, hand warmers, foot warmers, thermal blankets, gloves, hats, whatever we can. So for those people who do choose to stay or may not be able to access, we can at least minimize the damage of severe weather on a person's health.
I I really appreciate that you do that work and that you're doing everything you can to prevent those emergency room visits because, of course, to your point, they're not as effective for the health of that individual. And then I think my point was also following up on Mayor Strom's fiscal point, where we talk so much about how expensive these things are. But like, the cost of an ambulance ride is much more expensive than us driving someone to a voucher, right? So that, to me, is like, if you wake up in the middle of the night still on the street, you realize you're freezing to death. And you try to get yourself to an emergency room, or you manage to call an ambulance and it comes, right? Like, that is also a really severe fiscal burden. And it's not as directly on like the Lakewood balance budget. It's like harder to calculate. But that is still within our economic stress and like the county's stress and like Medicaid stress, right? So these are I I just, I want to just continue to support, I think Mayor Strom was making an excellent point, that this is not, in fact, taking from a zero-sum game, it's adding to the the total. Like, it it's like adding still within the same pie, right? Like, it's the same people who are needing resources. Like, providing resources does not increase homelessness. We know that as a fact, right? And so it it might, right, like to Mr. Goldstein's point that like we're the only service for miles in any direction, that's going to be a very burdened spot, right? And that's, I'm not trying to say that that doesn't happen. But my point is that if all these folks are already here and they're already experiencing like the potential emergency needs, health needs, et cetera. And that level of burden on our system is also a problem. And I don't know if any of you have ever just needed to be in an emergency room or a hospital during a winter storm, but it's like not the same as when it's nice out. The amount of human beings, both from car accidents, you know, and and those kinds of weather-related issues, and also the influx of people who don't have anywhere else to go and who and who have then therefore been injured, right? And are sick and have to be in the emergency room. It's it's much more, it's like very intense. Just I know anecdotally with one time, you know, but I just want to offer that as a as an additional cost aside. But in the cost question, recognizing that we do still have limited city resources, specifically, not to be flippant about that ever. The do we have a commitment from the county that they are going to commit the same amount or more for their voucher program to us next year? Next season? Like, I know the budget's not done, but like, that what we think is going to happen?
I don't know that I can speak to that. Mr. Wellington, I don't know if you've heard anything along those lines yet.
No, we have not heard anything.
Yeah. So, you know, I think we'll certainly be advocating for that. But the county is increasingly talking about their own fiscal constraints. So I I don't know. You know, it's it's, we're very thankful that they came to the table this year with vouchers, but it wasn't necessarily a coordinated approach in advance of the cold weather season. So it's hard to not be able to rely on it. And if they aren't providing the vouchers, the city would probably be in a tough position to provide that level of overflow through the voucher system just due to the financial constraints.
Sorry, I didn't know.
I I was just gonna say, I think to address the question that both you and Mayor Strom asked kind of in regards to the other financial costs of unhoused on on the city or on the broader community, I think the thing that's so great about what's happening at eight thousand West Colfax is that it's not just providing shelter for that night, it's providing access to all the services that Mr. Ginsburg and and Recovery Works put put out there. And and they work in concert with our navigators. Our navigators have an amazing opportunity to connect with folks and our mental health providers can connect with folks at that site. So it it really creates a path out of homelessness. So I think, even talking about that cost, it if if you think about this service we're providing through the emergency shelter as an ER, it really is that and kind of that continuum of care. But the goal is not to have someone to see the ER. The goal is to, you know, whether you admit them to the hospital and they end up, you know, seeking other care or you get them well in that, and then they move on their way, you know, that's that's really what's happening. So if if all we had was the shelter, it'd be great, but it wouldn't be nearly as amazing as what is actually happening with Mr. Ginsburg and his team and and other services provided by the city.
Thank you so much for highlighting that important point. And of course, this might be the time that brings somebody in for the first time, and then they don't have anything terrible happen to them. They're like, oh, I can come back for resources. So I hope we see that. I have another question, which is on like access to federal dollars. So this grant came from DOLA that really, really helps, right? In terms of our financial burden, Recovery Works financial burden, we're able to do this massive project. We would never have been able to do that. Is there, is there currently any, and maybe this isn't like the right question, but like, I know that we've looked at grants we get, we're good at finding funding beyond, you know, our general fund for these kinds of efforts. And I wonder if there's any, are there barriers for us accessing like all of that possible federal or state money because we are not to county? Like, is that maybe an additional thing looked to with the county collaboratively?
I don't, I don't know that I think that's the barrier. I think the challenge is probably more so the need for operational dollars as opposed to capital dollars. A lot of times the grants are focused on capital. So the city did just apply for multiple grants, one of which was for temporary housing for for the unhoused. And we anticipate also applying during the congressional process for that, but it that's a capital thing. So, you know, our our real need, you know, we we got the nine point five million dollars or so through DOLA, which was kind of a pass through of federal dollars, but the the operational dollars are going to be challenging on an ongoing basis. Mr. Ginsburg, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all as far as you know, grants you've applied for in the past or or the challenges in in seeking federal dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I do want to say that the county has been a a great partner in bridging the gap between just Recovery Works resources when we opened the navigation center and still waiting on a contract with the state to operate this. And so they've they've taken some of the burden in carrying us. And I think they're probably utilizing, well, I know they are federal ARPA dollars for that. And then they also came alongside to help us with the purchase of the motel for our bridge housing program. So they certainly, and then you know, they're certainly wanting to partner and wanting to find ways to support us and to support the whole system and the and the rehousing infrastructure that we're trying to create. I think that, you know, there's a lot of different ways to access federal dollars. We certainly really maxed out these ARPA dollars that came through the Transformational Homeless Response Grant and the Navigation Grant. And we're really fortunate to to capture a lot of that, which of course was all federal dollars through the state. I I can't say that being a city, you know, and then I, you know, I don't know where you know, where the income gap that the county still is, you know, of course, burdened by by the Yeah, taper. But I I want to emphasize that the county has been partnering and continues to look for ways to partner on resources.
Oh, yeah, I'm I'm not surprised to hear that. I I do want to just echo what Counselor Low said, too. I know that the county is trying to figure out how to show up. They are also, right, this is a problem that dramatically like was a problem that was under-resourced and then exponentially increased over COVID. And like, we have not seen any like slowing down and relief of that, right? And so I just want to recognize that they also are dealing with new things. I I know that they're not trying to ban us. It's I'm looking for ways to help help each other. So my last two, last, last two. Well, I I think I have a couple of things. I know you're talking about heat. And one of my concerns actually more than heat in Denver is air quality and fire season, particularly for like people who have health issues, young people. You know, we've heard personal stories from people who either are, have been unhoused and have lost family members to illness. And air quality during fire season with an inverted ozone, you know, we're seeing air quality that's hitting three, over three hundred occasionally. And like, that is a very different health risk than even even two twenty. Once you've hit those three hundred levels, it's really, really significantly different. I have really gentle asthma. I use my inhaler like twice a year. Unless that's what's happening, I won't go outside because I will I will not really be able to breathe well. And I'm pretty healthy, like I run, you know. So I just want to flag that as like another, as you're, as you need to figure out over time. And I also want to say, because we are leading on this, which I think is really fabulous, I wonder if there's opportunity for us to as city council, I think we could help with some of the like relationship and in, you know, inviting and probably even some of the logistics, I'm I'm happy to help. But the idea of really encouraging some of our like staff and other electives to come to work, to learn, to maybe, like, maybe we could even long term do like a workshop on best practices and how we figured out how to do this. Again, I don't need to have anything concrete tonight, but I was just really thinking like, that's still staff time and it's still expensive, but that is much than us still being the only resource. And I'm like, how do we like have a convening where we teach people, we help share and we like create plans? Like, I know the county does some of that, so there's that. And then my last thing is that I just want to say that when I was first elected, I was mostly told that that when I was first elected, I was mostly told that, um, there was no way we could ever have the budget for running at any level of, of human services, particularly not of this scale. That like, we could maybe do public private partnerships, but we would have to be a very, very small component of it. And that we as, because we're not a county are not capable or like be, be able to have, um, like this level of sheltering, of provided services, uh, right? And, and we figured it out and we innovated. And so I just, I know that we're not supposed to be looking at the future, Mayor Strom, but I have to say, the idea that we had a successful program and we might have none of those beds or less of those beds next winter is not tolerable. We can only increase beds. That is the only option we have. We are increasing the amount of people that are unhoused because we are in an economic crisis. We are in a housing crisis where people above eighty percent AMI cannot afford to live. And like, we are in a circumstance where seventy percent of the state of Colorado is one paycheck away from losing their housing. That is the vast majority of us. That's probably most of us on council. That we are six months of money, you know, we are one bad medical thing, all of us. I mean, I don't know any of your personal finances, maybe some of you aren't. But unless you have some level of like generational wealth or you have a very, very good career, which I'm so pleased for you, you're closer to that than you are to Jeff Bezos. And like, I just want to, and I, and I know, I, I don't think that, Mr. Goldstein, that you have any level of flippaness on this. I don't think any of the staff have any level of not knowing this, but I just want to reiterate and re-encourage that political boldness, that political courage that you were talking about, because it can be difficult, especially when we think we've done it, that we cannot have less than fifty beds available, especially if we don't know if the county will have vouchers. If we have to, if we have to figure out how to use city property, if we, again, which I know was difficult and sort of terrible in lots of ways, but perhaps with longer time, we can figure it out. We are a city of brilliant, innovative and compassionate people. And we can absolutely figure out how to not have less than fifty beds for emergency weather next winter. And that is all. I apologize for my monologue. Uh, thank you, Council of the Bureau for your patience.
Council of the Bureau.
Thank you, Mayor. And how do I, how do I top that? Um, uh, Mr. Gold, uh, Goldstein, thanks, thanks again for the presentation. I just kind of want to jump in a little bit and just to kind of ground the conversation. And, and if you don't have an answer today, I think that's fine. But I was just kind of curious, I'm, cause this, uh, part of what the city is doing in terms of its business has, uh, been new to me. Cause obviously we weren't doing this when I was on council, uh, before. So I'd love to get a sense of how much money we are spending annually for our operation costs and contracts and all that. Because I think, you know, that'll give me a good sense of, you know, uh, what additional resources, you know, we might be able to bring to the table as a council or, or if we, uh, or, you know, putting, uh, more than we, you know, it, it'll just give me a better sense of context. Uh, so I think us knowing those, uh, dollar amounts will be very helpful. So I don't know if you want to speak to that now, or if you can provide maybe some documents or a memo or something like that later.
Uh, I can speak to it, uh, to some extent now, uh, you know, it's a broader number than just, um, each operational night, but since tonight's discussion is focused on the cold weather shelter, uh, it's about five thousand dollars a night to operate that shelter. Um, so it adds up pretty quick. Um, there are also additional, um, costs that aren't necessarily included in that in staff time and, you know, a whole bunch of soft costs for the city. Uh, all the pre-work that's done by the CAT team and the navigators to get people to the shelter and get people out of the cold would not be in that number. Um, so that's just essentially our, you know, kind of a ballpark of our operational costs was they had to operate the shelter each night.
Okay. Do we, how many days was it open?
Uh.
If you know, sorry to put you on the spot.
A, a, around twenty or so, um, probably a little less than that, I think.
Okay. All right. Well, and I'm just trying to put it in context because obviously, you know, a lot of decisions, uh, we make throughout the year. You know, obviously could influence how much resources, uh, we have to sort of support this kind of initiative. And, and of course it's always out of context because we're always talking about the city as a whole and not necessarily in, individual programs. But I just wanted to flag that next week, we're talking a little bit about potentially putting a moratorium on the business and occupation tax. I think I got a number back that that could cost us a couple hundred thousand. Um, and then last year, I know the council, we've, you know, lowered the property tax, uh, by about a million dollars. So I'm, I'm just bringing those things up. Uh, it's obviously these are potential resources that could be going to, you know, these kind of projects. And I think it's, you know, behooves us to, to keep that in mind. Um, also just related, since I'm on the legislative committee, I think since we are talking about, uh, resources and, and what we might need, uh, obviously the city can't do everything alone. So I think that's just something else to flag and think about for next legislative session about, you know, what resources or support we might need from the state and hey, we should be going to the state and advocating for those uh, resources and, and, and perhaps even the feds, you know, thinking about our experience with NLC, uh, and whatnot. Obviously, uh, next week, we're also talking about CDBG funds. So CDBG funds obviously could potentially support our vouchers, maybe enhance our vouchers. So I think, you know, we need to be thinking about these things whenever we, um, approve these plans. Uh, you know, where we want to put resources. Um, so, and, and I also want to have a broader conversation about CDBG funds at some point, because I know there's some financing, uh, mechanisms in there with that section, one oh eight section, I think it's called, or something like that. Anyway, um, but I just want to flag that since obviously we'll be having that conversation, uh, next week. And I do remember when I was on council years ago, at one point we were, uh, reducing the amount of vouchers, uh, from CDBG funds. Um, I haven't looked exactly where we're at, uh, now, but I just, I do remember that happening, uh, years ago, and I was not in support of that. Um, so anyway, uh, appreciated, Mr. Goldstein, love to learn more and chat with you more about this, uh, sort of offline, just to get more of your perspectives and stuff. But I really appreciate you sharing with us, you know, about the resources and, and just your whole presentation. And also Mr. Ginsburg as well for being here. Thanks, thanks, everyone. And everybody's thoughtful questions.
All right. Um, thank you, everybody for, as Councilor LeBuer said, um, the very thoughtful questions, lots of, um, lots of things to hash through and all in a, the beginning of a journey of addressing this important need within our community. And with that, the beginning of, um, a lot of learning and finding opportunities to do better. So I, you know, wanted to send a huge thank you out to uh, all of our staff that were here tonight, Mr. Ginsburg for joining us tonight and Mr. Goldstein for the preparation you put not only in to the presentation tonight, but the, uh, mid-year report that you put together, uh, a few weeks back as well. So thank you, everybody for being here to, um, contribute to the conversation. We will go ahead now and shift to our, um, topic number two for the evening. Um, with that, that topic is, uh, proposed modifications regarding parkland dedication and improvement. Now, a quick reminder that there are comments on Lakewood Speaks, um, and some may still even be rolling in. So a note to councilors, please make sure to check that, um, through the evening tonight and, uh, after tonight's meeting, um, before tomorrow. And with that, I will go ahead and one note before I hand it over to Director Newland to kick us off on this presentation. So, um, we, in our retreat had, uh, and, you know, we've been working for lots of ways that we can as a city council body work in a more effective, effective, effect, functional, I don't even know what the word I'm trying to say. Um, efficient, there it is, way, um, and working through updates of our policies and procedures. And one of the things that we talked about at retreat is, um, kind of self-limiting ourselves to five minutes. In fact, we have these lovely little timers to keep us accountable. Um, I know this topic, this last topic was very, very passionate for many of us. And just a quick reminder that if five of us or if all eleven of us take five minutes, it is at a base fifty-five minutes. So just, um, asking everybody to be mindful of the time and, um, where we can not have too much redundancy and just notice that, you know, this is such of an important topic as well. But again, we're trying to make sure that we get lots of time available for questions for everybody. And I want to thank you all for, um, the humor that is going into this. So just to, as, as we move forward into our second, it kind of a reinsert, um, a self-monitor and try to keep our comments and questions to five minutes. Um, with that, Director Newland, I'll go ahead and hand it over to you for our presentation. There is a lot of information on Lakewood Speaks, so anybody joining us tonight or after tonight's meeting, there is a lot of backstory, a lot of, um, additional details, numbers will be talked probably ad nauseam tonight. All of those numbers can be found on LakewoodSpeaks.org. So please feel free to navigate to that as you're making public comments. You'll be able to see the documents available to review that deeper as well. And with that, um, Director Newland, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Kit Newland, Director of Community Resources. Um, so tonight we are going to be talking about land dedication and fees in lieu. And I want to start first by introducing the staff and the consultants that we'll be presenting to tonight. We'll have, um, Amber Till, and she's our Public Engagement and Operations Manager. Ross Williams from our staff also, he'll, he's the land design and facility management administrator. And then with Norris Design, our consultants will have speaking Kurt Friesen. And then also with him, a couple of other, um, cohorts, Elise Applegate and Clancy Mullen will be joining us for any questions that you all may have. As you know, the last update of this chapter was done in twenty eighteen. This is a chapter of the code sixteen point fourteen, was adopted by council in twenty eighteen and the original ordinance was established in nineteen eighty-three. There are a couple of items to keep in mind as we go through the presentation. First, um, remember Lakewood is an infill city. There's not a lot of opportunity for growth. The growth that is happening in Lakewood right now is generally going up rather than out. Parkland dedication ordinances are generally set up for cities where there's room for growth and there's lots of additional parkland availability. The overall goal is to ensure that all residents, both new and current, get equitable access to parks and open space. Additionally, it's interesting to keep in mind that the city of Lakewood has, is twenty-five percent of our current land is parkland. However, we all know that there's a cou- couple of areas in the city that are severely lacking in park space, and those are mostly in the northern and eastern parts of the city. So this study session is just an opportunity for us to share with you how we've been using the parkland dedication fees in lieu, um, how it's been working, especially since updated in twenty eighteen. And we want to share, um, hear from you, all the feedback and questions that you have. It's really just an opportunity for all of us to learn from each other. And with that, I'll turn it over to Amber, who will be starting the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, chapter fourteen point sixteen, that is fourteen point sixteen, not sixteen point fourteen of park and open space dedication defines and codifies that all residential land uses shall dedicate land to the city park sites and open space areas in accordance with the title. The current ordinance requires five point five acres per new one thousand residents. The Director of Community Resources may require payment of a fee in lieu of the dedication or may require dedication of a smaller amount of land than would otherwise be required. And then of course, that fee for the remaining portion not dedicated. The Director may also accept improvements of equal or greater value, the fee that would have been collected. Fees accepted remain within one of seven planning districts within the city and are used for park improvements in the corresponding district in which the development occurred. There is a list of how those funds have been utilized since two thousand eighteen in your packet tonight. All residential development greater than fourteen point nine nine acres must dedicate land. And then of course, we're here tonight because there are also recognized limitations of this ordinance. The land dedication requirement has limited feasibility of mini residential infill development. There is a lack of a simplified method in which to update the land values. Due to limited resources, parcels of less than three acres can create maintenance and services challenges. There is also a lack of flexibility in the use of funds where needed in underserved areas. And then lastly, something we'll talk about a little bit more later is that the fee in lieu is currently too low as compared to recent property values. As Kit mentioned, as an infill community, Lakewood faces this unusual challenge. We have limited growth potential. We also really need to balance that need for housing, like we just discussed earlier tonight, um, with open spaces to recreate inadequate parks. I will now turn the presentation over to Ross Williams to tell you more about the history of parkland dedication.
Yeah, Amber. The city's original parkland dedication requirements were first, first codified back in nineteen eighty-three as a result of recommendations outlined in the city's comprehensive plan as well as the Parks Leisure and Open Space Master Plan of nineteen eighty-two. Prior to that time, land dedications were negotiated with large area developers, which can work very well if there's land to grow into. The intent of the parkland dedication requirements was to ensure the level of service established by those planning documents for the city were continued in future developments. And the cost of continuing that level of service for new residents was placed on the new residents moving in, not the current residents of the city or the existing residents of the city. Um, just a side note on the, the, the first codification, I was, uh, one of the co-authors of that when we, one of the first assignments I had was to get this into our codes there. From the beginning, there has been a blend of land dedications and fee in lieu dedications. With fees being collected, the dominant method to satisfy the requirements. A list of notable, uh, parcels dedicated to meet the parkland dedication requirements is in your packet for tonight's meeting. In twenty eighteen, the city council made some modifications to the dedication requirements. Uh, at our recommendation, but also, uh, a lot of council recommendations in there. And one of the recommendations was to review the requirements every five years, and that's where we are tonight. In your packet, you'll find copies of the yearly report of fees that were collected and how the fees were used to improve the park system to accommodate the additional residents. An example of where we are planning to use the fees are shown on the slide. In this particular case, um, Two Creeks Park. Uh, and that's where a, a large amount of fees would be used this year. What we have seen in the last five years has been a, a significant uptick in the number of dwelling units being built, primarily in the single-family attached in the multi-family housing types. In most cases, the city has, the city has chosen to require fees and move landed dedications. This has been due to several factors. Uh, one, the calculated dedication for each development has been too small and would not provide a significant usable park space if it had been taken by itself. The, uh, land dedication did not, did not present an opportunity to aggregate with other usable sites adjacent to it or dedications adjacent to it to create a usable public site. And they were not adjacent to existing parks or trail quarters in areas of high need. Going into the future, it is important to note the city regularly identifies areas of the city not meeting the adopted parks and open space standards. Several recent studies, including the Imagine Tomorrow Planning Effort in twenty twenty-three, the Strategic Acquisition Plan developed by the Conservation Fund in nineteen, in twenty nineteen, and the Wofford Park Access Studies all have identified a lack of parkland in the north and eastern areas in the city. These can, tools can help us identify where we need to accept land and have private or have private park space be required. We are constantly looking at parcels to determine their suitability to meet our community needs through our acquisition studies and uh, reviewing the whole neighborhood. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Kurt from Norris Design, and he'll take through their review and recommendations.
Yeah, thank you, Ross. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, Kurt Friesen with Norris Design. Norris Design was hired to complete a detailed assessment of the existing ordinance and park dedication methodologies as well as study the viability of park impact fees. To begin the project, we identified three primary goals. The first goal was to reimagine parks and open space dedications within an infill community such as Lakewood. Uh, infill development provides unique opportunities and challenges, and the ordinance needs to better address those. Our second goal was to maximize parks. Our second goal was to maximize parks and open space with an equity lens. The map on this slide was prepared as part of the Imagine Tomorrow Plan and identifies underserved areas in the city today. And our recommendations will be responsive to the needs of these community members. And then finally, the last project goal was to improve transparency. By creating better maps and tools for staff in the development community, we believe we can make the process a little more user-friendly. First step in the process was to listen. We reached out to the development community to gather their feedback. We conducted a work session that included developers, Lakewood Advisory Commission members, and city staff. We also conducted a listening session with neighborhood residents, including members of the Imagine Tomorrow Master Plan Advisor Committee, and both of these meetings were excellent. They really provided tremendous perspective and helped guide the project and our ultimate recommendations. Next slide, please. A few key questions that were discussed in these meetings included, what are the pros and cons of adding a park impact fee? And is that the right solution for Lakewood? Number two, should we expand parkland dedication requirements to non-residential development? Should commercial development be considered? And then number three, how can we provide additional parks in areas with limited land availability, particularly in multifamily developments, which is a high percentage of new development occurring in Lakewood? Following these meetings, our team developed some preliminary recommendations with the goal of simplifying the overall approach. Our preliminary recommendations include, one, continue parkland dedications based on locations where park deficiencies are identified. We believe there's some additional mapping work to be done to accurately identify those areas. Number two, update the park improvement fee in lieu based on fair market value. As part of this, we recommend keeping the Affordable Housing Provision, which would provide the Director the ability to waive all or a portion of the fee for individual housing units set aside for households earning no more than 80% of the area meeting median income. Number three, update the projected population per unit, particularly for multifamily development. This is based on census and American household survey data. Number four, provide alternative park provision options. This would enable developers to construct compact parks that comply with city-defined standards, have public access easements, and would be maintained by the HOA or developer long-term. These may include plaza spaces, dog parks, gardens, trail segments, and drainage area improvements. And then lastly, the team decided not to recommend impact fees at this time as an impact fee is best suited for communities without land dedication requirements. This summarizes our recommendations. There's much more detail on each of these provided in the memo and other materials that were provided to you. With that, I'll hand it back to Amber.
Thank you, Kurt. All right, everyone, so that leads us to our next steps. We want to make sure that we're very clear that these preliminary recommendations are just our first step in the process. Think of it as an incremental approach. Also, given the disparity in our current fee in lieu and recent property values, staff has included in your packet a raised fee in lieu in the existing parkland dedication policy. That was after completing a thorough analysis of both recent park acquisitions along with park appraisals that we had available over the last five years. This increased fee isn't a final recommendation, but rather an approach that we can take now, knowing that we have more work to do as we turn into this assessment that Kurt's team is working on us with. So then, step two, following this meeting, the draft parkland dedication assessment will be prepared in accordance with council's direction tonight. We also hope to host at least a month-long public engagement effort on LakewoodTogether.org, where we would provide educational material and more tools around the recommendations, and have that open ideally for the month of May for the public to provide feedback. And then, as Kurt mentioned, we will expand on the Imagine Tomorrow Equity Mapping with the goal that at the end of this process, we have a very transparent map that we can provide to both the developers and the community of where those areas of greatest need are, and that would influence where we require parkland dedication. It's also important to note that in many areas, there are small, compact parks. That could be another tool that staff could use to meet park needs and to build an overall equitable system, which is our ultimate goal. Lastly, staff will then make adjustment based on what we hear from the community and council to modify the parkland dedication ordinance. Staff has tentatively scheduled the first and second reading with council in June for adoption, and we can modify that as needed as we work through this process. And that concludes our presentation. I'll hand it back over to Mayor Strom. Thank you.
You're muted, Counselor, I mean, Mayor Strom.
Okay, weird, I was muted in one, but not two. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you very much for bringing that to my attention. Has to occur at least once a night. Before I hand it over to council comments and questions, I wanted to give a big shout out and gratitude to our Community Resources Department for, you know, last year as we're going through the Big Parks Master Plan, identifying the need that we needed to really get a little bit more granular with this one particular thing. And not only doing that, but realizing that the importance of getting this right was one that also really entailed bringing in outside experts. So thank you to Norris and Company for joining us on this process. It really means a lot for you to have. I know you're very specialized in this type of work, so thank you for adding that to the conversation that we've got tonight. And really excited to see that we're looking at this not only through the lens of maximizing park and open space, which we all know is very important to our Lakewood residents, but also improving transparency in the process. It was a complicated process. It may still be a complicated process after, but there's definitely things that we can do to make it be easier to understand, easier to implement, and easier to change as we move through this. And likewise, also gratitude for including affordable carve-outs through this, knowing how important it is that we not add more barriers to that. So thank you to all of you that did, you know, all the work to prepare for this evening. With that, we'll go ahead and open it up. Does council have any questions? I can't believe I don't have any. Did I scare everybody off? We don't have any hands up. Okay, so we'll go with Mayor Protem Charazai, Counselor Stewart, and then Counselor Labir.
Yes, thanks, Mayor, and thanks, staff, so much for the great content of this presentation. A couple of things. I'm sorry if I should know this, but the seven districts, like, where is that map? I didn't understand what that was. So I'm looking at the park fee. Where am I looking at? I'm looking at the history, and there's seven districts listed, like, what are those? And where do I find those maps? So that would be one question. I appreciated there was some public comment just about evaluation annually in this, and I would love for us to start to get a shorter timeline on determining this. And I think annualizing that makes a lot of sense. Perhaps there could be some, you know, presentation to city council and sort of what's happened with parkland dedication, with fees that have been collected with this. But to go five years feels like a long time. And I know that there was a recommendation to annualize that, so I would recommend that. I know that there was one member of the community pointed out that there's some variance in the language in the staff memo, but I would err on the side of the annualized. And then I wanted to point out one piece from the Norris paper, just the 1B of parkland dedication requirement. And just semantics of required parkland dedication with developments and identified zones were practical. "Were practical" is like so subjective. So I see a member from the consulting firm has some smiles on that. Like, I don't know if we need to be so hard and fast on that, but I just think like this is such an important topic that we don't want to get. I certainly wouldn't want to put staff in a position where they are, you know, this gets politicized. Like, I'd like to make this as clean as possible, and I think that that's everyone's endeavor. And then my final question would be just the 80% AMI. That would be the only carve-out in my understanding for an exemption. So if there was a development that had some units that were meeting that requirement or the units in totality, I wanted to make sure that that was the only exemption that we see right now. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Charazai. Ross, can you talk about the planning districts? And then maybe Kurt can respond to the question about the "where practical"?
The seven planning districts shown up on the screen here came out of concept Lakewood, basically. At the time we wrote the original ordinance, we put the we wanted to keep the nexus close to where the money is collected, where we would spend the money in those particular areas. They don't follow wards because ward boundaries do change with population changes. These were static planning districts where we collect money and we spent the funds in those particular districts.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Kurt. I think we determined that we wanted to eliminate these planning districts as well, we're going to recommend eliminating the planning districts as a part of the new ordinance. Am I right? Yes, yes, okay.
Yeah, great, thanks. And I'll try to address the question regarding "where practical". I think one of the things that we want to do is just take a lot of the mapping exercises that were completed during the Imagine Tomorrow Plan. And what we want to do is take that information, identify where there's gaps in the system, really identify where the park needs are within the city. And that's where we would be more diligent with park dedication. So those are the tools that staff doesn't have right now, is they don't have the mapping, they don't have those tools at their fingertips. So that when a development comes in, it's apparent to both parties of where the gaps are and where those requirements need to be made in terms of park dedications. So in cases where it's not possible, those might be infill development, urban projects, multifamily projects, higher density. In some cases, it just might not be practical or possible, given the scale and size of the development proposed in that particular part of the city. So our goal as consultant team is to provide the staff with better tools and more transparency. We think the mapping exercises, which we haven't done yet, though, they're not going to be anything new. Basically, what we plan to do is just build upon the data that was developed during the Imagine Tomorrow Plan and use those tools to make to create greater transparency around where the gaps exist in the park system. And those are the tools that will help guide staff as they make those decisions.
Great, and I don't, I hope to not come back to me, Mayor, because I'd like us just to go one round. So I just would say that I want, I loved the alternative park piece. I think I'm so in favor of that, particularly in the north side of Lakewood. We don't need to do another study to know where we need open space. I can already tell you where it is. And I also recognize that there's not a lot of land there. So any nook and cranny that we can creatively activate for, like, increased quality of life, I'm super in favor of. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, thank you so much for putting this together. I'm excited that there will be more opportunities for public engagement on this. I think that's something that our community has really been wanting. So I hope everybody takes note that there will be an opportunity to engage in this before it comes before council. And I'm really, really grateful for the feedback of folks in the community already who have commented on this plan. I do also want to echo that I really like the idea of that compact and alternative park. Those ideas, you know, to have easements and, you know, public land and spaces that are maintained by the development but that are open to the public, I think, is a really great option, especially for infill communities where, you know, a full land dedication might not be possible. In the spirit of something that Counselor Charazai said, actually, in our previous conversation, I think some of the frustration in the community lies around not understanding when different mechanisms and tools get triggered. And so I would just really encourage us to try and map out. And I know that discretion is always needed at a certain point in time because not every development falls into a beautiful, perfect bucket every time. But I think to the extent that we can create transparency in this process around when a fee in lieu is collected, when a full parkland dedication is required, when a compact park development or a community space is required, to the extent that we can standardize that and take the discretion out of it as much as possible, recognizing that some discretion will always be needed, I would really encourage us to do that. Because, you know, I think I also want to just reiterate to the public that Lakewood is an infill city. We are more than 25% parks and open space now at this point in time. There are very specific parts of town, as you can see in this packet, that have a much greater need for parks and open space and green space and tree canopy than other parts of town. And I would really encourage, as we're getting rid of these zones potentially, that we can also use fee in lieu to really direct money and investment towards areas of town, regardless of where the development occurs, towards the areas of town that have deep inequities in access to parks and open space. I would love for that to be a part of the discussion and, you know, making sure that we all know that these types of fees in lieu get pooled together to buy larger tracts of land, like Two Creeks Park, and that there is a place for all of these different tools. And if we can just be a little bit more clear and transparent about how we get to the decisions that we're making and have just the steps laid out so that everyone is clear, I think that would go a long way.
Mayor Strom, can I respond to something Counselor Stewart said?
Yeah, please, thank you.
I just wanted to mention, because it's very important, that there has to be a nexus between the development and where the fees are used. So to, because this is something that we've struggled with when there's a development that occurs in the southern part of the city, just broad example. We couldn't take those fees and use them in the northern or eastern part of the city because legally, there's no connection between the development and the added parkland. So that's the reason why we want to try to use these maps that will show areas where we need parkland for developers to understand that when they go into certain areas of the city, we're going to require some level of parkland, and we're going to work with them to make that work within that particular area where we have a gap. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's helpful clarification. Thank you. Even if I don't love it, it makes sense.
Counselor Labir.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think for one thing for me, I see a lot of frustration, and this is something we certainly talked about when we redid this in 2018, which is the fair market value issue. I personally, if we can get to a sort of a transparent, clear fee number, I frankly think that's probably better because it leaves out the, you know, the ambiguity and the frustration where people feel like, oh, well, maybe we're not assessing it right, or we're using the wrong assessment tool or something like that. So that's one thing I would say is I think if we could get to just a fee, that probably, it's probably easier on everybody. But, you know, I could certainly be persuaded, I guess, either way. But, and then I think something to think about, too, is an appeals process. Whenever people feel like, you know, things weren't done correctly. I know we have that for our school land dedication fee. I'm not sure of what the implications of having that would look like in terms of, you know, volume or volume or or, you know, I I suspect not everybody would be using that tool, but who knows? Um, but I think that's something we should be thinking about. Um, annual review, I think, uh, especially if we have a fee and it's not just fair market value, right? We might have to do an annual review just to kind of make sure the fee is keeping pace with property values or or something like that. Um, so I'd certainly be in support of, you know, taking a look at it more frequently. I don't necessarily have a set number when I think that would be, but. Um, obviously, in the past, we somehow came up with five years. I think it's just because uh, I think before that it hadn't changed in thirty years or something, so or or maybe forty. I don't know. Um, but I think so we were thinking, okay, well, at least every five, maybe that's uh a a good opportunity to to take another look at it. Um. The planning districts, I kind of like the planning districts because there's that transparency thing where you know it's kind of gonna be in some specific area. Um, the funds and, you know, there is concern, and I will say there always is concern because right, who's going to be paying most of these fees? It's going to be where they're building the most and where are they building the most? They're building in Ward One and Ward Two. Um, so there's always concern about, oh, well, you know, these people are building the most in our community and we're not getting the money in our community. So obviously, um, sometimes having some transparency like a district or something, um, you know, is nice. Um, so if there's a way to do that differently, that is transparent and also speaks more to the equity factor, I think maybe that could work, but. Um, I do like, obviously, uh, it's not super publicized, these planning districts, but perhaps uh perhaps it could be, or, you know, I don't know. But I just want to comment on that. And I think one other thing I'll just bring up, I I'm interested in increasing potentially the the fee, but I also worry about going the other direction on affordability, because and this is a conversation we had a lot years ago. This will certainly have an impact if a developer has to pay a million dollars extra on on a project. Um, can certainly have a an impact on what people's rent uh might look like. So that's something to think about. And then that's another reason we created density factors, because it was kind of unfair that that we were essentially encouraging uh people at one point to build um sort of single family or like you know, track homes uh were more desirable, even though they took up a lot more land and um than maybe like a higher density uh development. So that's one reason we put in density factors. Um, and I will, my comment to that, but I just thought I'd share. So thanks.
Counselor Mayagro.
Thank you. Um. All right, I'm trying not to ask the same question. I promise that's my pause. Um, I definitely want to echo the small park notion. I also, if if this proves to just be like too complicated of a of a thing to think about in order for us to be able to move forward, I I it is okay, but I know that there have been some other, not green space, but there's been some other um types of programming where we encourage developers to like essentially try to make deals with each other. Um, and so I wonder if there's any possibility of, right, we know that a postage stamp park is harder to maintain. Can we in some way encourage, like if you dedicate parkland that touches parkland? Um, I think that, you know, we don't need it to be expansive, but particularly, I live next to uh an empty lot. It's a half acre. It would be a beautiful tiny park, but it's also next door to a tiny park. And then that would be a midsize park, which would which would be cheaper to maintain per foot. So, um, again, if it's fee and lieu, the city gets more control over that, but I really am hearing and I'm seeing in this and how I feel is that I'm really hoping that we structure this in a way that encourages less buyouts and more land dedication. Um, you know, that that threshold is is a burden enough that developers are really trying to work on creating green space for us? So that's a question. I don't know if you have like thoughts on it. I saw you nodding your head. Um. I know I know that that's like a strange one.
Oh, well, you mentioned some things that that do ring true. Um, small park parcels, if we can get them adjacent, so the parcel that you're talking about, if we can get them that a parcel that's adjacent to an already existing park, that's helpful. We want to try to make sure that these small parks are taken care of, maintained by um the developer or the property manager or another entity rather than the city. Um, because it is more expensive, even though per acre, if it's you're just talking staff costs, those are similar park to park, one acre park versus a twelve acre park. But when you add in the the time that it takes to load and unload equipment and the time that that's extra time that you're paying staff loading, unloading and doing the work that they have to do at small parks and then traveling fuel costs are added on to that and you end up having, it's more expensive for the city. So it's a really, it's a staff capacity issue for us. So I I don't know if that completely addresses a couple of things that you mentioned, Counselor.
Very helpful. I do. I do think even if it was a very minimal amount of you can dedicate of like a five percent less or, you know, something that's pretty small where you're not going to feel an impact really standing on the acre, um, but where the it makes it easier for them to say buy like a single, like what would be a single whole lot, but it touches. It's empty and it touches up, right? I so if there's something small like that, I just I'm interested in that innovation. I also, I also have a question about um about this idea of maintenance. And in terms of the fee structure, having the fee structure like reflect some of that cost if they're not who are maintaining it. I think that the idea of getting of uh the developer, the the private company, the owner, et cetera, whoever it is, to maintain is a great idea. Um, I go to a dog park that's maintained that way and it's beautiful. Um, but I also get somewhat nervous with just our ability to enforce code if somebody's maybe not being as responsible in their maintenance and um, you know, even things like private security versus Lakewood Police, which has more public oversight than private security for people who are on that parkland. So things like that make me just a touch. It wouldn't make me oppose it, but it does make me think, are there ways to build in that into the fee structure? Um, and of course, the general idea of making the the fee, what we can spend it on more flexible so that that is possible in general, right? Which I know is reflected, but I just want to really highlight that is very important to me. Which is another component of that, I don't know if we've done legal analysis on this, but my current understanding of how a fee and then a fund works, I really think that connectivity to parks, so connectivity between parks, being able to walk from a school to a park, being able to ride a bike from a transit spot or a major traffic hub to a park on safe, maintained sidewalks and bike lanes that are well lit and have tree canopies, I would firmly argue are well within that like fee definition um and not within the like tax definition, that that is narrow enough to the purpose of the fee. Um, and so really, especially again, in Ward Two, we end up with this thing where we have a lot of the small parks, right? We have many and 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 they're growing and we're really pleased that that's working out. But especially with this flexibility, we'll see an increase in those small parks, which I think is wonderful. But you really, there, it is pretty dangerous right now to walk park to park. Um, and so having both the district that is having the highest rate of density and then, you know, based on this equity map, and if that's then some of how we guide where our park investment happens, we'll also see an uptick in our parkland. So we'll have more people, more kids and more places for those kids and families to go. Um, and no way, no way for them to get to them, even though they're only a couple blocks away. Um, and so that conflict with traffic does worry me in Ward Two. And I I really think that it should be a part of the like definition of what the city is allowed to spend it if it is a fee and lieu.
Great feedback. Thank you.
Counselor, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, so there's a lot here, isn't there? Um, I like Council uh Mayor Pro Tim Sherezai's thought about annualizing this. This can help a lot, especially as the market valuation of the land might change from year to year. And then um, speaking of that, a public comment said, of course, throughout the city, the market valuation of the land changes. And um, and then I also read, but or if you could explain to me, so it seems like I read that it was, it's hard to have a standard, to have it fluctuate and that we want that. What is it, four hundred thirty-two thousand? We we want that standard fee throughout the city. So could you explain why it would be so difficult to have different fees in lieu reflect different land values throughout the city?
Russ, do you want to respond to that?
Give it a try. It's very difficult to come up with land values. Um, by project by project and timing and how those those go through our development process. Where we're trying to determine the fees right up front when they're coming in the door or if we're taking the land right up front when coming door. We don't want to wait until the end of the day when they are applying for building permit. And that's not the time to get a land dedication. Uh, and yes, parcels of land vary from place to place, locate, you hear from every real estate agent out there. Location, location, location is. Um, three acres on Wadsworth, uh, good example, three acres on Wadsworth or an acre and a half parcel that we acquired a couple of years ago on Wadsworth was and went on Kipling along Bear Creek. The difference in price was about twenty-five percent. The one on Wadsworth was significantly higher. The one on Kipling was not because it was in a residential area and lower value of that. So it's very difficult to come up with a set uh appraised value for every single logic out there. The other issue that we have found in trying to come up with appraisal, to come up with values of land. This county assessor's records are not as reliable as we'd like them to be to come up with true value, but they also, their their values also include buildings that we're looking at raw land out there. Um, and that's, and and we're trying to make something easy for us to administer, easy for us to update in a manner that's uh fair to everyone that's uh going through the process. And um, we're sometimes we've taken, we've gone for appraisals and it's taken us three months to get three to four months to get an appraisal done on parcels that we looked at, which is uh very difficult for anyone looking at developing a property, especially a single family person that is dividing their one lot into two lots. Uh, it becomes a fairly large burden on those developers. So we're trying to find a a equitable, simple method to update and do it more regularly. Want to point out that as Mr. Labir uh mentioned, when we originally wrote the ordinance, the city council put a cap on the amount of fee we could charge per unit. Basically, basically, it was seven hundred dollars and that lasted until twenty eighteen when we the authorization was changed to change that fee. But seven hundred dollars equated out to fifty thousand dollars an acre of value of land in the city of Lakewood. We haven't seen that land value in the city of Lakewood since the early nineteen nineties at the at the latest out there. Hopefully, that explains where we are on coming up with market value or values for the land that we were acquiring.
Counselor, thanks. Additionally, we want to make sure that the developers have an understanding when from the get go rather than because we can chase, you know, people away who want to build residential units if we are not clear about what the fee would be from the beginning.
Great, thank you. And so one last question is to just check my understanding. So it seems like there's three options. Then they can um dedicate land, they can dedicate land and or they can pay fee and lieu. Or according to the Norris Design Document, the third one would be a compact park development. And and I like that idea, you know, again, um, to, as I believe, um, Counselor Mayagro said, yeah, these smaller parks, yeah, that's a a great option. I live pretty close to Cottage Park, which is less than an acre. And so um, do I understand it correctly that all compact parks would be under the management of an HOA or a developer? In other words, not the city. Is is that a correct understanding from your document here?
That's the recommendation that we're making. Um, let me try to clarify something earlier that you said earlier, which is these are not choices that the developer gets to make. And that's been a a pretty broad misunderstanding in the community, so this is a good opportunity to explain. This, these are choices that we get, we would be making as staff in working with the developer, know and knowing what it is that the community of the area where the development is happening, what the need is there. So it's not, it's not a choice that they get to make. That that's one thing. And then the cottage park that Kurt mentioned is just one of the options that that might be sort of, we could discuss with them. Here's an idea, you could do a cop, you could do this park or you could do a dog park or a community garden. Here's some different options that might work for the land that you have. And then, yes, we would hope that anything less than three acres would be, our goal would be to have those newer smaller properties taken over, the maintenance taken over by by another organization. We would own the property and make a, do a um, or do a memorandum or IGA with them, if you will, that's not the right term, but a contract with them who agree that they would be responsible for maintenance. But if anything did go wrong, the city that way would have the opportunity to take the land back and figure out how to manage it differently if need be.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. That's all I have.
All right, then we have Counselor Cruz, Counselor Ryan, and then Counselor Nystrom.
Thanks, all, and and thanks again for this great presentation, I think, as is demonstrated by this um conversation. This is of importance to a lot of us in the community. So thank you. Um, I think my first question, just wanted to put a finer point on something um Counselor Mayagro was bringing up about like how these funds can be used. So just from my understanding, can the funds currently be used um through this fee and lieu um for like maintenance and for improvements to connectivity to parks or that need to be updated through this process?
The the funds can be used for improvements, but not for operational costs such as maintenance costs, maintenance costs.
Okay, so that would need to be, if that was something we were interested in, which maybe I'm signaling, um, is that something that would be then needed in this update process to be discussed?
Ma- you mean maintenance costs?
Yes.
That would be something that you would probably want to talk about in the budget process? If 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 we need to increase operational costs, that generally is going to mean additional staff.
Right. And so my my question really is, how can we make that come from this pot of funds if desired?
Uh, the we, I don't think that's possible legally. The the funds that come from the parkland dedication fee and lieu can only be used for park improvements or park acquisitions, new park acquisitions.
Okay, I would maybe like to talk a little bit more about that offline because to me, you know, improvements and acquisitions require maintenance. And I think that if that will take an update or whatever, that's something that I'm interested in because frankly, I think that that's a of huge interest to folks in Ward Two specifically, but I think throughout the community rather than just acquisitions. Um, so then my next question um reg- uh relates to the districts piece. So I heard you all say, you know, that part of the proposal is to eliminate the districts, but then also that the money has to be spent close to where the development is happening. And so I appreciate, I really like this equity mapping idea. I'm excited about that. But just want to better understand how these two competing considerations are going to be kind of melded together through this process.
The idea is that we identify where the gaps are with by using the equity map. And whenever there's a development that's in one of those gap areas, we would work with the developer to ensure that there's a way that they can get public park space as a part of the development. But there's not a way that we can create a nexus between a park, you know, a green belt park property as an example, and a a park addition or an improvement up up in the north part of the city. It's a legal, it's a legal issue that there has to be a nexus between the development and what gets added.
Okay, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so so just so that I understand, the I I get that like this equity map will help kind of to uh inform the decisions around the dedication versus the fee and lieu. And I think that that's a great idea. I but with the elimination of these districts, how will the determination about the distance or proximity to a development be made?
Oh, I follow you. Okay. Um, Kurt, do you think maybe you could respond to that question?
Yeah, I mean, the mapping exercise is going to help identify the gaps. That's where we want to start. And so I think uh first and foremost, again, as Kit mentioned, these are going to be tools for staff to use with regards to how dedications work. And so uh what we want to do is make all of this information more easily understood, more easily available so that the staff and the development community have the kind of what's missing right now. The districts don't provide a lot of benefit to that in that regard. Uh, they don't really speak to adjacency to parks. They don't speak to how close I am to a park. Um, they're more random districts. And so I think that's why we're moving away from them or suggesting that we perhaps move away from them is because they don't really facilitate what we're trying to accomplish, which is equal access to park spaces.
Okay, I think that makes more sense. I really appreciate that elaboration. Um, and then I guess the final maybe question or point, I know we got a public comment from kind of a coalition of affordable housing developers regarding making some of this um parkland dedication kind of exemption for affordable housing more predictable for them. Um, and so kind of just curious what the kind of implementability of that type of a recommendation looks like from y'all's end. Um, and also just from my end, like, is eighty the right threshold of that? Or do we want to think if there's an automatic exemption for that to be more deeply affordable, like sixty percent AMI or something like that?
Yeah, this came up when we did our last um ordinance rewrite as well. I think we're open to suggestions and we can rely on the consultants to help us a little further dig into that. Make sure that we have the right, the right um number, yeah.
Right, thanks.
You bet.
And I'll just um conclude my comments. I know I'm right at my five minutes. Um, by saying, I just want to echo what folks are saying about pocket parks and and really trying to think about how we can maybe incentivize. And and I think that a lot of the plan does that. And I'm looking forward to continuing along that line because I think that that's really important to people in our area and across the city. I'm excited about a lot of the other recommendations regarding increasing the fee in lieu as soon as possible, annualizing that and making it as predictable as possible. Um, and a lot of the other great recommendations you worked hard on. So thank you.
And I just want to speak once a little bit to the affordable housing units. Current ordinance does allow for the eighty percent AMI uh reduction. However, it requires the developer to go before city council. And that's where I think is probably the biggest block in the process there. That uh the director may recommend it, but it has to go before city council. That's that no one has taken us up on that offer in the last five years.
Thank you. Councillor Ryan.
Hi, thank you. This is uh very helpful. I'm I'm uh I wanted to start with the four hundred thirty two thousand adjusted number. It it's my understanding you don't need our approval, right, under the existing fourteen point sixteen point oh seven zero, you can just make that change now. You don't need our
Yes.
Approval, correct. Okay, great. And is there any reason to delay putting that into effect uh absent the city council uh requesting a different number?
No, we can, we we just give warning. I think we want to allow thirty days for the community to understand that there's been a change. But other than that, no, unless other, some of you all have objections or want to give us different opinions, we can move forward with that. Yes.
And and is that number, and we keep talking about fair market value. Is that the fair market value of generalized residential property? Or are we trying to come up with a fair market value of what we consider parkland?
Well, well, we used um appraisal values that we've gotten on properties over the last five years and came up with the everything from A to Z, as you can imagine, and we just took an average of those numbers. And it's not, it varies, as Russ said, it can vary from, you know, really, really high per acre costs to very low, depending on where. So we just landed on that as a happy medium, if you will.
Okay, so it's an effort to try and come up with a fair market value of residential property across the city.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, then and the data that you use is over the last five years?
Yes.
Okay. And it, you know, I I noticed under our existing ordinance right now, the the director has discretion if it's, does not have discretion if we're talking about fifteen acres or more. Um, and I'd want to just double check our conversations with Metro West, but it's my understanding if we went to something smaller, say nine acres and a hundred and fifty units, so one or the other, if if the if a development included nine acres or included a hundred and fifty acres or more. Um, we'd say that the default, if you will, is a parkland dedication. Um, and we could have a mechanism in which that there could be a a way to take that out. I've been taught by several department heads that we should not give too much discretion. Uh, you want more objectivity. Is that uh something that you could work with, you know, I'm the numbers, you know, we can play with a little bit, but if we went something smaller than fifteen acres and we also tied it to a number of units as opposed to just a landmass, uh as you mentioned, we're an infill city, so we don't have great swaths of raw land. Is that something you could look at?
Oh, we could certainly take a look at it. I don't want to answer at this point because I I think we need to regroup and talk about that idea before I we respond, but.
No, absolutely. I'd just love for uh just the staff to take a look at that. And obviously with that, all that would be a caveat would be um anything that any units that are eighty percent or if there's a different number that city council wants to put on the AMI. Um, that would be accepted or exempted from um from from the parkland dedication as well. I would be in favor of it um not having to go to city council if we have units that are eighty percent. Um, but we may need to talk about that because if we're just talking about one or two units uh as opposed to like a Metro West where the entire property i- is more geared towards low income, then I I think that's something we would need to take a look at. Um, and just in terms of this broader discussion about what the acreage would be. Um, you know, in real estate, there's a uh common term of what is the larger parcel, right? So an owner may have, we may have two different parcels, but they're connected in terms of title. There, you know, or use or contiguity. Um, those would be considered larger parcel. I think we should be capturing that in in our discussions as well. Um, I love that your multifamily uh density went went up. I I appreciate that. I think there's some places in the ordinance uh where I think if we do this uh exception for AMI and number of acres and the number of units, we may need to start it out or, you know, subject to, uh, say, for example, section fourteen point sixteen point zero four oh A. Um, uh for that, to to make it clear that you have discretion subject to those types of things. Um, I would like to see the annualized review, uh and I think I think I would like that not be discretionary that I that this uh four hundred thirty two thousand number would be assessed uh annually or reviewed annually to update that. And I do think it would be a good idea uh right now under the uh point one zero zero, we have that five year review. I'd like some stronger language for for the, to to get a report back as to how this is going, to see whether we're having some unintended consequences before five years come up. Uh, and then my other question is uh more for Norris. Could you uh, could you share that what cities you looked at? You you mentioned you were trying to come up with some different thoughts as to how we deal with an infill city. I'd like to know what other infill cities perhaps you might have looked at, or if you could share some of that raw data uh with us in a in a separate email?
Yeah, absolutely. We have a number of cities that we researched and I'm going to ask Elise Applegate uh from the Norris team to to hop on and and respond to that if she's available. She may have had to to jump off, but we're happy to provide that for you. Uh, we did uh extensive research, looked at many, many different communities. There she is. Elise, would you uh be able just to provide a quick uh update on the number of uh communities that we researched?
Yes, absolutely. We started out with about two dozen cities that matched Lakewood in terms of um the population, you know, one hundred to one hundred and fifty thousand people. Um, proximity to a major metropolitan area and um sort of a limited ability to continue to grow, um whether that be through artificial growth boundaries or um just because there are cities or or mountains in every other direction. Um, and then kind of narrowed that down into a smaller group that we really focused on for this report um or recommendations. Um, we focused on in the Denver metro area, both Westminster and Aurora. I know those are not exact examples, but there are some good similarities. Um, we also looked at Fort Collins and really not so much for their um, you know, outward growth, but for the way that they have been dealing with um some very similar challenges as as um cities have changed. And we can touch a little more on Fort Collins. We have some expertise there. Um, and then we also looked at several areas in Southern California, kind of the Los Angeles area, um Santa Ana, Santa Clara, um that had some pretty similar situations. Um, all of our comparisons were in the western part of the US because land patterns here are so different from the eastern part of the US that was developed earlier.
I mean, if if uh if it's possible to share that raw data, that would be very helpful. I'd love to be able to look at some of those ordinances to just get a sense as to what some of the others are doing. And then hopefully this is my last question, but one of the things that sounds fairly exciting, but uh as some of the um public comments mention, I'm not sure how it's going to work. So I understand that the city doesn't want to maintain something that's less than three acres, a dedication that'd be less than three acres. And I understand that. Um, and and so we're relying on the idea that a developer might come up with their own smaller pocket park, if you will, that's under three acres. I just wonder how likely that would be if if the fair market value frankly is lower than what they're probably paying for or what they paid for or what the value of the property that they're holding now is. Why would they dedicate property that they hold that has a fair market value higher than what the assessed value would be? So do we really see that a pocket park would actually happen?
Um, Ross, do you want to respond to that one?
We don't, we're not sure. It's a pocket park. It's it's enough incentive for there to do it. We may, we may need to look at how our ordinance is structured to encourage that type of development in there. Um, our biggest problem, we've tried that using existing ordinance, giving credit for extra open space beyond what is required by their zoning in there. Unfortunately, what we, we didn't have a process in tracking that or making sure that it was stayed public in there. And what I'm seeing now is well, down in the Mission Trace area, down Pioneer Park, south end of the city. Uh, we're seeing develop the apartment complexes or townhome complexes where they have amenities that they put in there like swimming pools and tennis courts. Now taking out those amenities and adding more apartment units on top of those uh or at least requesting that I have, they, we've had those requests come in just recent recently out there. So we do need to find a process to encourage keeping open space within the, within the development or within the site, as long as it's beyond what is minimally required by our zoning limits.
Could, could we require a developer in their, you know, submitted plat to have a pocket park in there and maintain it? Is that something that we would have the ability to do under Nolan Dawn?
We do have some uh in the cases in the Rooney Valley where we have pushed for that type of, and they have taken that up. We're not getting a lot of subdivision flats per se. We're getting townhome, you know, one lots being subdivided into six townhomes. And that doesn't generate uh a lot of space or that, and it doesn't generate a a plating process a lot of times too.
And 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 I apologize for for my words in using uh plat. Can, can, does the city legally have the ability to require a developer to have a pocket park, for example, um instead of dedicating a parkland to the city or fee and lieu?
I think we'll have to look into a little more research into that particular process or the specific, specific city uh on that because I have not found um my reflection, I have not seen that occur. Maybe you'll work with our consultants and see if they have had some experience in that area.
Great. So thank you. And just last comment, I I appreciate getting rid of the district maps. Um, I think they're fairly arbitrarily, I mean, they're probably made a lot of sense when they were drawn up. Um, but I think if we're trying to do something that we're just say the land, the dedication has to be somewhere in the vicinity. Um, then we're not bound by the the map, I think could be, give you a lot more flexibility to for equity purposes.
All right, councillor Nystrom.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Um, good evening. Uh, and I uh appreciate all the information that was provided. Um, it's very helpful. I uh I am encouraged to hear about the listening sessions um that will be happening or the 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 public interaction that will be happening in the month of May. Um, I think it's really going to be helpful to help people understand what um, what may change. And I'd like to understand a little bit more about the legal nexus uh that was referred to before. Um, and I think my co-councillors have made a lot of really good comments. I I guess, you know, the, I'm very pleased to hear that we're reimagining what a park um is considered because I I kind of think the uh equity map, as it's called, uh might look a little bit different if um when we were building apartment complexes and things of that nature that we were including some park space. So the park space can be very simple and low maintenance, um zero escaping, a walking path, those types of things. And I and I think that should be a priority and um you know, especially when when we're building high density housing. Um, you know, that from my viewpoint, parks, trees, birds and bees, they're not a luxury, they're a necessity. And they shouldn't be, you know, just viewed as a transaction. Um, and I think we need to take some discretion out of this process. Um, because I think the best interests of the citizens come from input from citizens and then utilizing the tools we already have to make some of these decisions. And we have a planning commission that is there to advise council on some of these things. Um, and and I think that you know, small spaces, small parks um can make a world of difference for the quality of life of residents. And I think that's really important. Um, you know, the the northeastern part of the city, you know, again, if we revisit how we're approaching developments um instead of the default, the default in my mind should be the park land versus the fee. Um, because a developer is going to opt out every time. And I think historically, looking at the documentation that was provided, that's what's been happening. Um, and that, you know, that has um again, raised a lot of concern. It it's not helping us meet our tree canopy goal. Um, and and once you build something, that land is gone. You're not going to replace it. Or once you cut down trees, they are gone. You can put seedlings in somewhere else, but it's going to take twenty five years till you actually get canopy out of it. Um, so, you know, again, I I think um there's a lot of good questions that have been asked and I'm interested in uh finding a lot, getting a little more information on some of these things. And um you know, and and again with the, you know, so you, you mentioned subdivisions or apartments or whatever where people are removing park space to put in swimming pools, that is something that really should be factored into ordinances to avoid that possibility going forward. Um, and I too would love to see the raw data on the analysis that's been done so far. Um, but I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunity here to not only look at what what the fee and lieu is, but the process that we're going through and whether it makes sense um in terms of representing the citizens. So I look forward to, you know, the further engagement and the community feedback. Thank you.
Councillor Lo.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. Um.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. Um uh Ms. Newland, I could could you just confirm something for me? I oh this may be an elementary question, but I want to make sure I'm understanding it right. Right now and and also under your proposal, like a core thing that fee and loo can go to is is. Is the city acquiring new parkland, right? I mean, so once in in the districts, but if there's a plot of land. With enough fee and loo dollars, we can go out and acquire a park and 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 create and build a new citywide park, right? I mean, that's a fundamental. Thing that we use these dollars for, right?
Yes, yes. Two Creeks Park is an example.
Okay. Um and just one other clarifying question, this uh. This proposal that you're bringing for us has been, um I assume. Uh co-developed in in consultation with the planning department too, because because it does seem like it has a lot of planning implications.
Yes, we've been they they were part of our uh our stakeholder group. Yes.
And do they, I mean, does plan if Travis isn't on the call, but does he support this recommendation?
Um the last conversation I had with Travis, honestly, he was thinking that we should. Get rid of the parkland dedication and just take fees. So I I guess, no. He doesn't necessarily support it. But we're pretty far along in the process and we. Believe really strongly that we need to keep a parkland dedication. So that's how we've landed.
I I want us to take a step back here. I I I think I really appreciate this. This is a tough issue. Yeah, um I think Counselor Ryan hit on something really, really fundamentally important here, which is, he made the point, okay, so we're doubling fee and loo, and I I get that. But yeah, most developers are probably, if given if it's still below market rate, like just the on the pure economics, they're going to. Default to um to to fee and loo where possible. I understand it's something that that. That um community resources approves, it's not of the developer, but but I I do think, I mean, the points have been made many times at this point that. Um there there's a pretty consistent record over the last five years of fee and loo instead of these, you know, parkland dedications, and I think for economic reasons. Look, I want more parks. I mean, for all the reasons we've talked about, um Lakewood has a lot of parks, we have a lot of open space, and particularly in the areas we've talked about, which, you know, primarily we've talked about in the north, but there are some important parts on the. Eastern side of Ward Three, there are parts we need more open space. And let me say something that may be a little bit quickly unpopular, but it's really important. This has got to be balanced with this question of strategic density, okay? Um in rural communities like Lakewood, if they want to be strong towns, and we want to be strong towns, they need more strategic density. It's how you get walkable neighborhoods and bikeable neighborhoods. It's how you get tax revenue that's going to build a strong community, right? Um it's and it's also a critical part of of an affordable housing strategy. Anyone that thinks that we can we can deal with the affordable housing crisis we're in, just by building more. Townhomes and single-family homes doesn't is is not looking at the data correctly. I'm a little worried that by doubling fee and loo in. If we do it with without being really strategic about our larger affordable housing goals and our larger sort of planning conversation, that's frankly part of why I asked about. Director Parker, I'm worried what we're doing is we're adding an important barrier for 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 building, frankly, yes, I mean apartment complexes, I'll say it. Um and you know condo homes, right? Um and I do want more parks, but if we get way more denser developments. We're not going to get fee and loo loo revenue, right? Um which will cut off an important funding source for new parks. I think what we our goal here should be to create a structure where, yes, we do have, I I'm for increasing. Fee and loo um so that it's closer to market rate. But I just I also think it needs to be done in coordination with some other things that will create incentives for developers to put in place uh denser projects. That will then allow us to couple those things with going out and acquiring strategic parks that actually work. And yes, to Counselor Nystrom's point, I also think that that if we can require, you know, if someone's going to build a big complex. I think if we can make sure that they're carving out pocket parks, I'm all for that and not giving them a way out of that. But we've got to make sure that we're not creating barriers to affordable housing and walkable neighborhoods. And making our communities stronger with with, you know, the 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 tax revenue that that will bring, right? Those things have to be balanced. Um so that's all to say, I I like this proposal, I think it makes sense. But I really would like to see it done. I I I'm very mindful that that this has major planning developments. And I think it does need to be considered in in context with um with council's affordable housing goals. Uh you know, it it is, it is, I think if Director Parker would hear, were here, he would talk and he'd be right to. That that it's great that we have this affordable housing carve-out, but very, very few developers are actually taking advantage of it. And raising the the fee and loo might create an incentive to do that, so I like that, but I'm not sure it's strong enough to start having developers suddenly start churning out. You know, eighty percent or sixty percent to Council Cruz's uh affordable housing set aside. So these things have to be done, these things don't work in isolation. Um I I'd like to see, you know, a a policy that that requires developers to set aside some pocket parks, but maybe with a little bit more flexibility than what we currently have. Um and if we're going to raise fee and loo, I I guess I'd love to see some data to make sure that we're not going to like cut off both an important funding source. For park maintenance and park acquisition, and we're not going to throttle Lakewood's ability to create more walkable neighborhoods, and I'll stop. Um thanks, thanks again for the presentation.
Director Newland, did you want to respond to any of that before I move on?
No, I don't think so. It's all all of great feedback and we're just kind of absorbing a lot of the feedback. It it sounds like, I guess maybe I would ask you. Um it sounds like maybe another session with city council prior to an ordinance. Um the ordinance being read in might be helpful. Because maybe we need to have another opportunity to get specific feedback from all of you, I think. Because we're hearing a lot of different thoughts and ideas, so I'm seeing some heads nod. Maybe we could schedule another study session. Okay. Okay, sorry.
Let's um, we've got three more speakers here. Let's go through everybody and then. See how we might chart our course going forward.
Sounds good.
Counselor Oliver.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I'd like to start um with this uh equity map and uh this question's for anybody who wants to answer. I'm looking at uh Twenty-S sixth Avenue. Um and this map is showing that there's a pretty hard high need for parks there. Uh why isn't Crown Hill Park considered when this map was made? Because it's right across the street and it's a huge park. And there's no way I would consider that they need more parks right along Twenty-Sixth.
Amber, Amber, do you know the answer to that?
Yes, there was a lot of back and forth about that. Counselor Oliver with our master plan consultant for Imagine Tomorrow and um where the advisor committee. Landed was that um Crown Hill not being in the city of Lakewood, they didn't want to include it in the map, but I do see your point.
Thank you. That's the snappiest point. I mean, that's that's wrong. Th- this map is just wrong um because of that. Also, I heard a couple, still sticking to that map, uh I've heard a number of times that we have over twenty percent of our land area is parks. Does that include uh Bear Creek Lake Park?
Yes.
Okay, because that's federal land. So if we're not going to include Crown Hill because it's in Wheat Ridge. Then we should be including federal land in that one too.
Well, we 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 do operate Bear Creek Lake Park as opposed to Crown Hill. We do not operate Crown.
That's a good question. Did we contribute, did Lakewood contribute to the uh. To making Crown Hill Park or buying the land? Or do we contribute maintenance costs to it right now? Because I if I were Wheat Ridge, I would be asking Lakewood for money because. Where our citizens are sitting right there and are using it all the time, I'll guarantee that.
We do contribute to maintenance there. It's a three-way partnership, but we contribute to a small portion to maintenance, yes.
Okay, so I think I made my point. Okay, so also earlier. Uh Ross said that uh in most cases, they took the fee over parkland. I think it's all cases, is that correct? In the last since since the law was changed in twenty eighteen, we've never taken parkland dedication, have we? Or parkland, we've always taken fee and loo since the the law changed or the ordinance changed in twenty eighteen, is that correct?
Ross, have we taken any land? I can't remember the answer to that question.
We have not had an opportunity to finish several projects that we've requested what requested land. We do have several projects out there. That are still in the development uh process that we have requested lands uh to be dedicated. And we have taken land, dedication forms and easements for trails and some improvements. Those developments, as far as have we officially taken possession of them at this point in time? I'd have to go back and look through our our list of development, see in the last five years to be there. We've requested, we've requested some. It's it's very tough to find some locations that fit that, but we do have. I I I know we've picked up several small parcels. Could you tell us, do you know off the top of your head uh what which ones we're looking at? Um for taking land, because there's a difference between saying we've never done it. And yeah, we have done it or we're almost going to do it. Well, we are, we are working on several up in the uh Ward Two area right now that we are requiring land dedication for. For trail systems and adjacent to our park uh specific development. I I mean. I have to put together a list of what ones we're working with right now, but uh in fact, we just had a recent. Problem I I'm having is we make these comments at a pre-planning stage and it may take a year, may take only two weeks. Before they turn into a formal case, so uh I have a lot of pre-planning cases where we said we want land, but do they become formal cases? No, in some instances, not every single one of them that become a formal case, they would be completed and taken to fruition. Uh but we are working on um the Two Creeks in the. Two Creeks area off Thirteenth Avenue, uh working with Metro West, we've had a trail system and not necessarily. But between Lamar and Harlem Street on Dry Gulch. Uh that we've got land dedicated for trails. Um we are working on Thirteenth Avenue just to the east of. Mount Air Park, trying to get trail system, and we've taken parcels along from several developers right along the light rail line there. Um but there are, those are some of the samples where we have gotten those developments. And then also looking at timing. I've been here too long, I think years have blurred together unfortunately as far as uh which which one, when they came in or when where the when they went through the system. I think we've all been here too long, but. Okay, but the I'm confused. Okay, moving on. Uh I'm a little confused. I got confused tonight with the nexus. Um between developments and where the fees are used. And I think you tried to answer this once, but I'm still confused, sorry.
Okay, can I can I have, maybe to help, um we have Clancy Mullin, he's one of our consultants online. This is probably an area that he can speak expertly to.
Okay, but I was going to also refer to that slide about the Two Creeks. Because earlier today, tonight, um the slide for Two Creeks Park came up and it was talked about, oh, we're using all of our. Fee and loo or fees, and and so I'm not sure where those fees are coming from. Is it the fee and loo's, it's a different fee? So yes, please.
Yes, it's a fees and loo that we're using are some fees and loo that were collected in that planning district to help develop the park.
Okay, that makes sense. So it's not, so it's not from, the way it sounded earlier. It sounded like it was coming from the fees and moves from all of Lakewood, but if it's.
Oh, no.
Okay, never mind, then then that clears that up completely.
Okay.
Um all right, so my opinion is that, yeah, we need to increase the fee and loo. Um and I would set it with the with the um value of the land. I would keep a separate price and I'm sure uh our. Our staff can can handle that, even though it's a little tight. And also, I don't love the idea of leaving. This all up to the director of community services. I'd like, I'd like council to have some authority at some point. Um I've always been championing council authorities. But uh now, um do we want every one of them to come before us? No, we don't. But. I could see a lot of them coming before us and they just go right through and get passed on the consent agenda. But once in a great while, there's going to be one like Bellmar Park that comes through and and we actually stand up and stand up for. Do our job for what we were elected for. And and because, you know, we hear from all the people continuously. And so I'd rather this was all decided at council level and not director level. And that's about all I have right now, but I would like to have more conversations about this. It's just late and everybody wants to quit right now. And so, yeah, uh if you want another study session, I'm all for that.
Do you, do you want to give, uh Mayor Strom, do you want to give Clancy a chance to just briefly speak about the nexus? That was asked about earlier and Counselor Oliver, yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, well, you put me on the spot because I I don't have a great answer. I'm not an attorney. I'm not sure there is a, I mean, there's nothing in state law about the required nexus being a proximity thing. I mean, you have to spend. You have to spend the fees on something that's growth-related, on something that adds to your. Your uh park infrastructure. But it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, next door to the development that. You know, there there's no hard and fast rule about uh how close you have to be, how uh proximity. So, you know, if you get rid of districts, then yes, I mean, that does kind of beg the question of. What do you use to say you're, you know, you're you're in reasonable proximity? I mean, it becomes very difficult to. To pin that down, so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, I I would, I would just kind of leave it there for right now. We could come back to it maybe.
Okay, it sounds like something we need to get legal advice from our um city attorney. Thank you, Clancy.
Thank you. Counselor Labir.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I just wanted to point out that I think some of the frustrations in the community. Related to, you know, the park fee and loop situation, I think some of which actually could and and should be addressed really in the zoning code. Not just the the fee and loo. I understand the issues with the fee and loo, but. A lot of the frustrations is out of our MCU zoning district. And uh I know it's a little off topic, but I just want to point it out to the community that I think. That's where a lot of their frustrations could be easily addressed, because, you know, when I'm looking at the setbacks, for example, on the side and rear. Of a MCU zoning district, the minimum requirement is zero feet, you know, something. A modest change, even a five-foot or something like that, might actually help address some of these uh community concerns that I think have created some sort of consternation. Uh and particularly have sort of had people taking aim at the uh the fee and loo. Um also, I mean, just the open space requirement in the MCU is also fifteen percent. You know, that's something that might be, we might want to uh take a look at. In a future uh session. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out. But I think that's, there are, there are appropriate places to help uh, you know, have these conversations about, you know, how we get more. Appropriate development, you know, uh so I just want to kind of mention that as well. Um and as far as a. Future session, I mean, I, the study session, I, you know, it might be more helpful to do a a work session, so I just wanted to kind of. Throw that out there, because obviously these things can be um can kind of easily get in the weeds. And I'm not sure I'd have a whole lot more to add in a future conversation like this, so I think I said my piece. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um. Where I'm landing, I'm wondering, so Director Newland, it sounds like we kind of, we've got. Two steps that you're waiting to hear from us on. First is. Number one, just approving an increase to the fee and loo. Which we're in a study session, so we're not necessarily voting on anything tonight, but you're you're looking for. Expedicious um changes to the fee and loo price just by itself. And then separately, looking for council direction on moving forward on a deeper. Uh addressing, you know, different things that can be changed or improved within the fee and loo and park dedication. Process that would include. Process that would include public engagement. Is that, do I have that right? We're kind of looking at two, two answers for you tonight.
Yes, I I have a suggestion, maybe what we do, and I understand the concerns about the fee. Um, we can change the fee um. Whenever, so um, I was thinking maybe we go ahead and move forward with this first fee change, the four thirty two or four thirty seven. Um, and then we can still get feedback from you going forward, and if the recommendation is that we do something different with that, then we can make another change to that. As far as the other um input, I was just um. Getting some information from our deputy city manager, he he was suggesting maybe we do. We could provide you all, since we've heard all your feedback, we could provide you with options for some of these different discussion points. And then that might be a way to get through another conversation more expeditious, expeditiously.
Yeah, well, and one of the things that the questions that I had with that second step. Was also, you know, it mentions in there a public engagement period, and I think, you know, we'd all be interested in. I mean, we can come back here and talk till we're blue in the face about questions and things that we'd like to see, but. But at the end of the day, our job is to represent the residents of Lakewood, and I'd like. To personally look at doing this public engagement part first. Then we come back more informed on what our residents are asking for, and I think that'll make a meteor um conversation that'll have us. Hopefully landing um more on what it is the community is ultimately looking for as we're trying to navigate forward. And and some of that maybe comes out of comp plan conversations as well.
I'm good with that, that sounds great.
Okay. So, um, first of all. Council, I think I saw some consensus, almost anonymous, they're not anonymous, what's the word? When everybody, it's too late, um, everybody, it looks like everybody was on board with the idea of. Increasing the fee now, is there anyone that did not want to? Um, go ahead and increase the fee prior to that next step happening, is there anyone that did not want to? Counselor Matt Guerrero.
I just have a question on that, which is. Uh, is. If then we rework some of this, like over the coming months, year, whatever, if we go and rework, um. Like the affordable housing exemptions, processes, et cetera, and like what threshold that is or what that looks like or why. We're still allowed to do that, right? Like increasing the fee now does not prevent, does like, we don't then have to consent to another year or five years before we're able to like. Look at this.
Correct, yes.
Okay, just double checking, then yes, I feel fine about it.
Perfect, okay, so there's um desire for that to occur. Then separately, does counsel, do we all have agreement that? We would like to move forward with a public engagement period and then we circle back. To go through some of these more specific ideas on how we improve the ordinance in general. Moving forward. Counselor Low, question?
Just very, very quick. Thing on on the on the first point of like, are we for? Increasing the fee and Lou, Mayor, um, I mean, to to Counselor Macar's point, sure, I I guess you have to be very explicit about it, I and I'm. Sorry, Ms. Ms. Newland, I know how much is on your plate, but I, at some point, I would also love to just see a some a memo, a presentation, something. From you and Director Parker that looks, okay, fee and Lou has been increased. How does this fit into the city's broader affordable housing plans? Because I I do think they're connected and I am not, I understand coordination with departments is. Complicated and takes time, but it it just, I I don't know how we can look at this completely in isolation without looking at how it. Affects this other conversation the entire council's having around housing.
Yes, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Counselor Cruz.
Thanks, yeah, my my question really relates maybe to the scope of the public engagement we're we're doing, like, just want to recognize, right, like, in the the memo, it outlines that some of this question around. Stakeholder and neighborhood engagement in this kind of provision has been, has been, was done relatively recently. And so, to me, as somebody who's been a part of community engagement. Processes, I would hope that it's like, here's what we heard from you all, is this correct? This is what council is doing, and for that to happen kind of. More, as we've been using the word expeditiously, like expeditiously and not and not like starting over from scratch, because I think we've heard really loud and clear that people want these things sooner rather than later, and I understand all of us want to be really intentional. But I I don't think like continuing to push and push and push on this because it's complicated is the right way either, so just wanted to. Understand maybe a little bit more of the scope of community engagement, given that this has already occurred to some extent um is envisioned.
I I I was thinking that we would take the feedback that we've gotten from you. And use the starting point, maybe make some tweaks to the starting point that we brought to you tonight. Um, and then get gather feedback based on. That from the community, so we would set up a Lakewood Together site, and that would be the way that we listen to what people have, of course, we'll do. Outreach to make sure people know that it's available for them to go and provide us feedback through that site, that's what I have in mind. So we're not starting all over again.
Okay, so with that in mind, is there anyone that um does not agree with moving forward in that way? I'm sorry, Councilor Nystrom, you've got your hands up.
No, I I just wanted to ask for an opportunity to review like what's what's documented as an output of this. Meeting, um, and then will be. Submitted for public input, um, you know, as a. Yeah, I can't think either, just collating that this feedback before, before it's, you know. Uh, given the blessing to move forward and saying this is what we're going to do, right, but um, other than that, no, I don't have any objection to what you were just asking.
Okay. Do we have any objections? Okay, that looks like consensus to me. Do you, Director Leland, have the direction that you need from us, or are there any other questions that you've got?
No, I don't have any other questions right now, thank you so much for all the feedback.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for all of the work that all of you have done, I mean, looking at all the faces here. That were involved with our responses tonight, it's, you know, I really appreciate, and again, I appreciate your community resources department. Reaching out to people that are genuine experts in this space to really make sure that as we're looking through this. That we're doing it the right way, so um, I appreciate all of the time that all of you guys have put into. Um, the work leading up to today, but the fact that you're still with us at ten thirty six P M, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then with that, um, we'll just hand it over, do I have any counselors that have committee reports this evening? Counselor Stewart and Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Just a very quick one, um, reminding the public that the budget and audit board would like to hear from you, we have a survey, a community survey that is open. Through April twenty fifth, so you've got ten days. And all of the information as well as the survey can be found at lakewood.org backslash Lakewood Funding.
Thank you. Counselor Matt Guerrero.
Yes, um, the uh next HPC meeting is on April twenty fifth, um, the agenda is currently like. It it might have already, actually, I didn't double check Lakewood Speaks, but it's either. Posted or like about to be like, it's been in the process for ten days, um, so it's close, I forget which day like staff does that. So people can look at that and check it out, what I really want to like draw council's attention to and the public's attention to, because I think this is sort of the. Earnest beginning of getting, having a lot of conversations about actual policy, which is very exciting, um, which is basically what we got to last time is um. A. Highlights of what we think are the priorities, like our recommendations, um, and we haven't finalized that, it was not a vote, we like essentially did a ton of brainstorming there and now notes, and so. That list of recommendations will be a part of the like packet that's available on Lakewood Speaks ahead of that meeting, you have comments. On Lakewood Speaks, and then we, our our hope is that we're able to then like show up with like we've up down voted on or at least have some level of consensus on. Sort of here's what we as the HPC who've gotten a lot more time than all of council will get to have on the strategic housing plan to chew on it. Uh, here's what we think are things that are, here's what we've heard from staff are sort of already moving, so it's like stuff we need to do a little tweak or low hanging fruit or whatever, and it's like. Let's make that happen or support staff in what they need or whatever, and then here's the handful of bigger. Juicier, like more community outreach, more necessary, like building of of complex systems of principles. Like related to how the green space would like hit maybe the way that like marketing would write that, those types of conversations. Um, and how we think we should be prioritizing the HPC's time to be getting that feedback, getting that expertise, working with staff on like how to then to then shape those, so that's. We're sort of finishing that discussion at our next HPC meeting. And Mayor Strom, I know we've talked about this, so if I'm, if I'm misillustrating it in some way, please feel free to correct me, but. The long and the short is that we're going to have that continued discussion from last month. Where we have more input from our city like staff experts, and we have more information about what is moving or not on these things that. We said we have a special part of our interest in, and we'll be able to essentially have a dig in a little bit further and then um have. Um, a level of of HPC based uh uh consensus in a in a recommendation of of how to focus. Some of our housing energy, which is obviously a huge priority, and not all of that's going to be on the HPC, so we're hoping to also recommend like. Here are things that we don't think need that level of scrutiny, time commitment, et cetera, that is necessary to bring to a commission. So that's what we're looking at.
Perfect, thank you. Counselor Cruz and Counselor Stinks.
Just wanted to briefly note that for the legislative committee, um, we likely, we will be having what is likely our last meeting of the legislative session on um April twenty fifth at eight A M. So we're not meeting this week, we're meeting next week and looking forward to seeing my wonderful members then.
The Head Start Committee meets tomorrow and we will look at the federal review. Report, we'll look at the school calendar, and for those listening, they do have job postings, two full-time jobs and four part-time jobs. That's it.
All right, thank you, everybody. And with that, I'm seeing no further business this evening, I will go ahead and adjourn. The study session at ten forty one P M. Everybody have a good night.